Koutou katoa, good morning everyone. I'm just going to invite James Daniels to open our meeting this morning with a karakia timatanga.
A ka'tu aha'ua kaitemihii for mo te hui whaka'ira'ira, te hui o te rā, te hui roa. No reira, tu tāwamai ronga, tu tāwamai raro, tu tāwamai roto, tu tāwamai waho. Kia tāu mai te mōri tu, te mōri ora, kī te katoa. No reira, haumie, hui'e, tāi'e.
Kia ora and thank you. We have apologies this morning for temporary absences from councillors who have to be absent at different parts of the meeting. Councillors Davidson, Galloway, Scandrit, Templeton and Koka. Do you need to be away too? Yes, and I've had one from Yani Johansson as well and Phil Major. So at different parts of the meeting, we will have different recorded temporary absences and they'll be recorded in the minutes. Would someone like to move that they be accepted? I listed him in the thing, okay. But I listed him as temporary absence here. I did consider that. So who moved it?
You did.
Oh, okay. Seconded by James Daniels. I put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Don't think I've had any declarations of interest for any items on the agenda this morning. No, which moves us on to public participation. The first one is New Zealand Museum of Toys and Collectibles. Alan Preston, trustee and curator, and Ruth Fisher, trustee and operations manager. Good morning and welcome.
Firstly, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to share our venture with you and to start with a little history. So in February 2016, after two years of set up, we opened the Toy Collector in a smallish building in Fallsgrave Street. It was very much an experiment but something that Alan had wanted to do for at least the last 30 years. After expanding within the space that we had, it became obvious that we needed more space and that this was something there was an appetite for. It had been an experiment, we didn't know how it was going to be received. The only negative feedback we ever got was that the space was too small. So in September last year, we gathered together a few like minds and set up a charitable trust to run the museum in an expanded format. In December, we moved into the Manchester Street building that had housed the City Library after the earthquakes and set about building the new museum. After having put everything on hold, with lockdown, we opened in July. The museum is a collection of around about 30,000 items that are designed to trigger memories and nostalgia, whether you're eight or 80. It's an intergenerational space, an experience that's quite rare as far as we're aware. There's not too many times when a grandparent and grandchild can talk about things that they relate to in the same space and about the same topic. Play is very definitely universal. Probably the easiest way to explain is to show you a little. So we have a video that we hope will run. Just taking a second, there we go. So our intention was never to have the biggest collection of a single item, although we do have some fairly major collection numbers, but rather for it to be broad so that anyone visiting could find something that they either had, have or wanted to have, either as a child or as a big kid. The museum includes a working railway, a large Lego city area, a play area and currently eight separate rooms dedicated to different themes around play. We've been able to not only put our own collection on display, but some of the amazing toy collections from people around Canterbury. So many of these have been boxed away since the earthquakes and the owners are excited for others to see what they've amassed. We're also receiving lots of donations of people looking for somewhere for their long-loved toys to have a home. Oops, next slide. Don't really need to see it again. So who in their right mind opens a tourist venture in the middle of a pandemic? We didn't have much alternative, we'd already started. But we were also fortunate that we already had some presents in the market and some of the local and national media have given us airtime. The video that you just saw was edited from a Seven Sharp segment that played in July. Considering the borders are closed, we've been relieved to have local and New Zealand tourists, albeit at much lower numbers than we'd hoped. We support several local charities dealing with disadvantaged youth and their encouragement and positive feedback along with that from retirement homes and other visitors has been wonderful. We were also nominated and selected for a civic trust award, which adds to the knowledge that we're doing something right and that there is an appetite for what we're doing. To date, this venture's been totally privately funded. We've had no funding from anyone except ourselves. We receive no rent relief from the COVID situation from our landlord and manage to keep our staff employed only through the government subsidy. We've exhausted all our personal savings and recently increased our mortgage so that we could stay open with our landlord threatening to terminate the lease. We're about to open our function space, which will increase our revenue and we continue to get more numbers through the door, but we do need funding. We're applying for funding from other sources, but money is tight everywhere as everyone knows. We know this is an asset for Christchurch. We also know it's a world-class location. We'll do everything we can to keep it operating. Your support to make sure that happens would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I mean, this is the public participation part, which is just a five-minute segment, but I know that you've planted some seeds with all the councillors, so thank you very much for coming along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you. No, I'm sorry, but I have to stick to the five minutes. Yeah, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Now, Jenny Harper.
Former director of the Christ HR Gallery. It's great to be here, perhaps especially because tomorrow's the 14th anniversary of me coming to Christchurch to begin as director of Tapunaro Waifetu, our art gallery over the road. I retired from this position early in 2018, but I haven't been idle. So I was pleased when Chartwell Trust asked me to work on a booklet, which we've called Picture No Galleries, but the subtitle inside is Why Public Art Galleries Matter Now More Than Ever. I'm giving each of you a copy this morning. They were delivered only last evening, so this is a kind of launch, a morning coffee launch or something. But as elected members and senior managers of council, you're a key audience. I argue for the pivotal roles art galleries play in their communities. For as much as we need science to resolve the realities of climate change and as much as we need new economic thinking to address growing social inequality, human beings also need a sense of meaning, value and purpose. Art and creativity are amened to this end. I point out how important it is for galleries to have reliable and continuous funding. They need to be open and active so that our collections, staff, exhibitions and volunteers can provide access to the pleasure and hope that art gives. I'm also very hot about entrance being free for all. As much as Botanic Gardens and public parks, our collections belong to the people of this city, where they're current kaitiaki or guardians. I hope you enjoy it, as well as McCarthy's design cartoons. It's free and deliberately short for time-poor readers and finishes with nine burning issues, which I hope to discuss with the next Minister of Arts, Culture and Heritage post the general election. I'm more than happy to take questions over coffee or a glass of something suitable once you've digested it. So Jo is going to distribute them now. Dawn, there's a copy for you and one also for Mary Richardson, and I hope for enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is the launch.
Thank you, well done. Much appreciated. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, next item on the agenda, deputations by appointment. There were none and no presentation of petitions. I'd like to move that we include the supplementary report that's set out on the agenda in today's meeting. Andrew Turner seconded. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. And I'd like to move the suite of minutes that are set out on the agenda. Do I have a second for that? Jake McClellan, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Now we come to the Community Board monthly reports. And if I could invite Emma Norris, Chair of the Papanoi and his Community Board, Waipapa Papanoi and his Community Board, to come forward. Thank you. And I see you've got Simon Britton with you Deputy Chair, so thank you.
Kia rukou, thank you for having us along today. First up...
I haven't got the slides yet.
We haven't got the slides yet.
Looks like they're about to appear.
First up, I'm just going to speak briefly to one of the Part As that you've got in front of you today. It's the Marshland Road Speed Limit decision. So this is for the stretch from just south of the main North Road Spencerville intersection down to Preston's Road, changing it from 70 k to 60 kilometres an hour. I'd just like to note that the driver behind this recommendation is safety and I'll just ask that you have that at the forefront of your mind. And also the consultation that was done last year, a large proportion of those who were against it were actually not locals. They were residents who live north of the city who were not happy about having extra time added to their commute into the city. Next one, Simon? Yes, it was an eight to two vote with the joint community boards.
St Albans Community Centre rebuild is progressing. There's some updated photos in the presentation today. It is enclosed now and as you can see, continuing to progress. There were some hold-ups of course related to COVID with the shutdown, but we've got an opening now targeted for March next year.
We had a great event that was held on the 4th of September. The Papanoi Advisory Youth Committee ran the Great Christchurch Car Rally, which involved 97 youth from the north-west of Christchurch. Nine vans travelled around Christchurch with participants completing challenges to earn points using the Goose Chase app. Challenges were varied from the ridiculous to ones requiring knowledge and skills. And the event was run in a way that could comply with COVID-19 requirements because we were still under restrictions as to groups of people gathering together. So it stuck to those requirements but still allowed young people to connect and feel like they were part of a large event. The formal evaluation is taking place next week, but... but feedback to date has been very positive. And I've got a couple of comments to quote here. Can we have this event every year? This is the best thing we've done in our life. And can we run a year-long event? So this is a great example of partnership and collaboration. The youth committee led it with council staff and support, as well as partnerships with other local agencies to bring this event to the young people. So that was a really, real highlight.
We mentioned last month that consultation was about to open on the future of Ten Shirley Road, the former Shirley Community Centre site that is underway now, and we're getting good response from the community. We're asking for very broad feedback on the future use of that site. Consultation's open until the 12th of October and from there there'll be a report coming back to the board.
And then this one's popping up again. The roadworks that have been done to mitigate the effects of the Christchurch Northern Corridor are nearing completion and slowly but surely the number of orange road cones throughout St Albans and Edgeware and Marahoe is decreasing. The Warrington-Barbatus intersection is now complete with the new traffic lights. Work is continuing on the new signalized T-intersection at Forfar and Warrington and Barbatus-Edgeware intersection is nearly done too. Cranford Street is just having some final resealing work done. And we recognise that this has been a long and stressful process for residents to deal with, as well as contractors. So it's great to see it nearing completion in the next few weeks.
And as I'm sure you're all aware, event season is, we're really into it now with spring and a lot of community events coming up. In the Papanoi Inness area, there's a wide range of events that are happening from this weekend onwards. As well as what you can see there, there's a significant community tree planting event happening at Cranford Basin this weekend and other local fates and so on. There's two events here that are happening with locally is including Faka Oho, the Papanoi Community Day, and preceding that this year for the first time a night market at the Papanoi Youth Development Trust. I've also got Shirley Shine coming up and a number of other events, as well as Summer With Your Neighbours. The board has allocated funding to a significant number of groups. And after all, who doesn't like a community barbecue? So yeah, just encourage councillors to get involved in events in their local areas as I'm sure our councillors will be in ours.
That's it from us, thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just, was going to ask whether your community board's given any consideration of some sort of celebration of the end of the roadworks when it comes? You know, the, a street party of some sort? You know, I just, I just feel like, as a city, this was imposed on us and it would be good to acknowledge the disruption that it's caused the residents?
Yeah, that's something we can definitely discuss. It hasn't been brought up yet. I think it impacts such a wide area, so it's more than just sort of a street party, but it's definitely something we can discuss.
Well, we could close off Sherwood Street into it.
I'm sure that would go down well.
Just saying, just saying. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Did someone, did you have a question? No, Aaron.
Yeah, so just with the opening at the motorway, is there going to be a walk-through, bike-through like we did with the Western bypass?
Planning for that, it's underway at the moment.
Oh great, so it will be one of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was really, really good.
Fifteen kilometres. The cycle weighs 13 kilometres. We had a sneak preview last week, Emma, Mike, and I and a few others. And to me, the highlight is the cycleway along the side. I must say, it's absolutely amazing. It's totally off-road and it goes under, under underpasses and over along waterways. Eight hundred thousand tree plantings have gone in there in all the stormwater basins for water quality. It's a pretty amazing job they've done. So I don't know how you'd do a, you might be able to do a section of it as a walk-through, but we'll bike you. But it's the silver lining in my view.
Regarding the completion of the works, I'm aware one sentiment in the community is it'll be great for the road cones to be gone, but what's going to follow the road cones, of course, is the increased traffic. So we do just need to be sensitive to that as well in terms of the impact on the community.
All right, so would you like to move that Pauline and seconded Mike? I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. Thank you both very much, thank you. The next one is the Waifuru Sprayed in Cashmere Community Board. Carolyn Potter.
Kia ora tato. I'd just like to congratulate the person before me on the car rally. I'd love to hear more about that. It sounded as a really exciting thing to do with kids, young people. I'd like to think about repeating that down our area. We've got a Part A. Is that coming up?
Not on the presentation.
Oh, right. Sorry, I thought it would be on the, which is to do with easements on the next door to the development on Wurzley's Road, housing development on Wurzley's Road, the easements to allow for the development of the flood plain, which will be a wonderful asset and park for the neighbourhood. As I've mentioned before, this has literally switched a whole neighbourhood around about partially resenting the new housing development into a great deal of enjoyment in the new park where there are already people are walking their dogs and walking kids, et cetera, in a development that's going to be an absolute enhancement of the neighbourhood as the other flood developments have been in the other two areas that have already been done. The council's doing a wonderful job and council staff are doing a great, great work in that. So we move it later? Okay. We had the Manuka Cottage Blessing. This is, this development, this rebuild of a community cottage has been eight years in the making and a lot of disappointment in the road. But the blessing, which was the opening of the building, was excellent, was a terrific occasion. This has been done on a reserve next door to Otatahi Housing and with a playground outside of it. And it is going to be a terrific asset in the area. And it has taken a lot of work by council staff, particularly because it's building on a reserve, but it's going to be worthwhile in the end and it's a, it's a great building. We were really pleased to be there and to be at the blessing and we look forward to the opening. We've had the turning of the sod, we've had the blessing, then we're going to have the opening, but it's all been worthwhile. Thank you. This was a very special occasion. Our, the board has been enabled by staff to, every couple of months, have our board meeting somewhere else. And this was at Addington School. And 13 years ago, our board tried to get Addington kids and community access to the school, which had been split in half by Brom Street, the building of Brom Street. And our board tried to get some access to the school by the people who were left on the other side of Brom Street, separated from the traffic. We wanted to, we were ignoring disability access and asking for an overbridge. We would not ask for that now. But we wanted a tunnel or an overbridge to get the children across the road. That never happened. We, we put quite a lot of pressure on NZTA at the time. We failed. This, the school has become increasingly fed up with what is a dangerous situation. And at this meeting, we had parents talking to us and children. That's Tessa Cook and Jacob Wilkins-McClay there before us. And we had community members there and we had NZTA. It's very much to NZTA's credit that they came prepared and they promised the school that within a period of two years, they would be building, and they didn't specify, but they said they would be building a crossing of Brom Street for the Addington community that would completely separate the community and the children from the traffic. Unfortunately and sadly and without any prejudice, I'd just like to say that the following day, a cyclist was killed on that particular crossing. And that is what the school has feared. They showed photographs, for instance, of trucks and cars on the crossing who had not stopped at the lights as they should have done. So this was, this was a real major success for the community, not for the board in particular, but for the community. And I was astonished at NZTA's willingness to come to the party. And we are very, we're delighted, we're absolutely delighted. This is one of the wins for the year that we can report back on. And we were thrilled about the actions of the community and how worthwhile it was. Next one. And this is, this is a short video that we're going to play on a mentoring programme which calls for women to be able to play rugby, to enable women to play rugby.
Nothing gets in the way when the Suburbs and Privleton Under-16 Women's Team hit the field. Despite this, the girls still face many challenges playing the sport. These are just a few of them.
Not strong, didn't know how to play. Refs being like, not, is like, a bit easier on us than boys.
Not being taken as seriously as we want it to be taken.
The Suburbs Rugby Club is determined to change this.
For women's rugby in general and the girls' rugby to be taken more seriously. We believe it's a great product and, and great rugby to watch. Exciting and brutal and all the stuff that goes with the game of rugby.
They started a mentoring group for the girls last year, organising training camps and lining up top women's rugby players to pave the way. The results are already showing.
And we're seeing massive improvement in individuals' skill levels and the way that they play the game as a team. So it's, it's been very near.
Brought our sight together.
Yeah, it helped us learn about each other and myself about rugby.
Bond friendships.
Jason says it's all about encouraging girls to give it a go and make good decisions.
They're just at that impressionable age and that as well, I guess. We're, they're looking at making important choices in their life. Sport is such a massive tool that they can use to, you know, to gain sort of togetherness and that sort of thing with their peers.
In 2018, more than 1,300 women registered to play rugby across Canterbury, but officials would like to increase that. And in a couple of years, they'd like to boost that number to 1,600. Jason shares this goal and is calling on girls to give it a try. Antoinette Spicer, Metro News.
We've had a lot to do with the Suburbs Rugby Club. They are really changing the culture of rugby in our area. For instance, they were one of the first clubs to go alcohol-free. And they have been very much involved with our board as well because they're taking over the lease of Coronation Hall. The Coronation Hall repair and renovation in order to be able to make it suitable has taken some time and we look forward to seeing the progress until the Suburbs Rugby Club can get into it. The Suburbs Rugby Club also intend to sublet that to another organisation in our community. We, I just wanted to mention one more thing. Public forum is the best thing on our board. We have never, we have never fewer than three groups or people coming into public forum. Sometimes we really have to ask people to come the next week because we've got five or six people wanting to speak at public forum. It's been incredibly exciting, interesting, innovative, and it has led us to several ideas and projects for the future that we probably wouldn't have thought about. It's been highly successful in our communication with the community and their communication with us. And you can see in our report some of the people and groups that have come to us recently. And I just really am glad that the council introduced that as a feature of our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim? Yep. Just Antoinette Spicer, who was the reporter. She was coming to our board as a, as a trainee journalist. It just was really cool to see her.
With the broadcasting school?
Yeah, yeah.
We have the broadcasting school people coming to, coming to see us regularly every year.
Yeah, I see them every year as well.
Um, just, and I've said it before, the Manuka Cottage, the new building, has totally changed that area because when we talk about reserves, in the old days, we couldn't touch that piece of land and it has been a journey and that's what we were talking about earlier on. But an interesting thing, the locals didn't use the, the, really used the playground, et cetera, because it wasn't a safe area, they didn't feel safe. This has totally changed the area and is such an asset. And this is what we should be doing. It's only taken, what, eight years?
Yep. But your point is well made though because they would have looked at other buildings that would have been conventionally in the community, but this has changed the use of that land. And the design that the staff have done is terrific. And really, when you enter the reserve and look at the building and, and come to the building, the whole welcome is entirely different in that area.
Yeah. James?
Kia ora, Carolyn, thanks for the report. It was really interesting to hear and to highlight, have you highlight the Suburbs Rugby Club?
Yeah.
And the fact that they've gone alcohol-free. I'm looking at you, New Brighton. And, and no, I didn't know that. And so hopefully that's the start or it's part of a wave where they could, could look at that, which is ironic coming from me, I know.
It's ironic coming from me, James.
Okay, cool. And I just want to do a shout-out for, you were talking about Antoinette Spicer before and the guy that was being interviewed, Jason McRoberts, he's the young brother of Mike McRoberts.
Oh, yeah, that's so cool.
He just looks older.
Very good. Different, different quality of hairstyle. Okay, so it's been moved by Tim, seconded by Melanie. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next one is Tapartika O Rakaia Houtu, Banks Peninsula Community Board, Tore Peeden.
Kia ora, good morning. Good morning. Okay, so we have got one Part A as part of our report and that is for 55 Woodhills Road in Akeroa. Okay, Banks Peninsula Community Board received 22 applications this year for our Summer With Your Neighbours. A total of over $8,000 was requested. Three applications were outside the scope and referred to DRF funding. Nineteen applicants were granted a total of $3,000 between them. That's not working. No, no, hang on, go back, sorry. I might just change the screen. No, sorry, be with me, I'm sort of trying to, when I'm paper-hanging at the moment. Events range from street parties, working bees, barbecues, neighbourhood Halloween, to a community gathering complete with defibrillator demonstration, beach clean-up and barbecues. So it's money we feel well spent in the community. And this is the big one. Okay, so we were really fortunate to have Governors Base School come and present to us. On the 21st of September, they delivered a powerful presentation to the community board on key learnings and actions on climate change. Students from years five to eight have been learning about climate change as part of the Ministry of Environment's Climate Change Learning Programme. Prepare today, live well tomorrow. Christchurch City Council have been supporting the delivery of this programme in a number of low-lying coastal and inland schools with additional adaptation lessons for schools to raise awareness and start conversations about the impacts of sea level rise and how we can respond as a city. Thanks to the council for starting the important work around climate change. The year seven and eight students who presented to the board provided an engaging summary of what climate change is and why it is a problem. Shared some ideas of what could be done, what the Governors Base School are already doing and what their hopes and dreams are for 2025. The board have written to Faka Koutai, Usian Transport Association, to express concerns about the rapid deterioration of State Highway 75. Now, this is not council. Now, this is not council roading, this is NZTA roading. But there is a great concern, um, about the deterioration, especially between, um, Coop Town and Devos Hills. Um, recent repairs, cracking and slumping, severe dips and potholes in areas where the road edge is close to a steep drop and safety barriers would be beneficial. So we are, we're forwarding that to NZTA, or have done. It's a great concern. And now Banks Peninsula Walking Festival is, um, going ahead uh, between the seventh and twenty-ninth of November, um, organised by Rod Donald Trust, Little River Waivera Community Trust, Project Littleton, and supported by the board. Um, experienced guides have led, uh, will lead you on tracks, reserves and private lands everywhere, every Sunday, sorry, Saturday and Sunday during that time. Tickets are available through Event Finder. Um, and at this stage, thirteen guided walks were already sold out and fourteen guided walks have available spaces. Very popular event on the peninsula. That's a fiddle.
Thank you. Well, James had his hand up straight away, presumably because he wants to enrol for one of them and now he realizes that he's too late for thirteen of them, so he's gonna have to find one of the other ones.
And some of the walks are great.
In actual fact, I was photobombing what Pauline was doing. I did that.
Good one.
Yeah. Well, actually, while I've got the talking stick, I, I just, is it quick?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Um, look, you raised the issue of the, uh, the condition of the roads on the peninsula. And you, you quite rightly point out that, uh, the responsibility prime in some of those areas is NZTA, Whakataki. Have you had any, uh, conversations at community board level regarding the speed limit through Little River? Right? And where it ends? It ends too soon on the Akaroa end.
We were, um, was it last Watangi Day? We had the council out for, um, uh, citizenship ceremony and we had two near misses while we were there. So we know firsthand as to how fast people are going past that, um, busy stretch of road. And the board and also the community have raised that with NZTA previously. So we are still having that ongoing discussion. Um, it is not safe through there. That's why children have to catch a bus from just four kilo, you know, less than four kilometres away from school because it is not safe to bike or walk from that area to the school.
I, I just wonder whether we, we, um, are able to, um, add our weight as a council to your, um, request. I know that it's been raised before because, um, you know, obviously I was, I had a role in the citizenship ceremony and, uh, you know, and, and actually I drove over there on the weekend and it was, I, I was very alert to the fact that that was an area. And even though it was, the marae wasn't being used on that day, you know, it, it, it's not hard to imagine how tricky it is, um, to get up to that speed limit, um, from having been through a sixty-k area, which is rather fast for even the Little River area, I might say, but it is state highway, so that's the challenge.
There is frustration because it goes from sixty to a hundred, back to seventy for Coop Town. And, and the hundred kilometre an hour is less than what, a kilometre? You know, it's, it's a small, small step, you know, in amongst, you know, there is, there is activity.
So even if it was that seventy all the way through, it, um, but I still think the sixty should pop out past the marae.
Yeah.
Um, and then it should shift to seventy.
Well, for full disclosure, that marae is one of mine, Waivera. And, and I was there on Sunday as well. And I noticed that the sixty, um, uh, speed limit ends during, by the domain. And I think, that's crazy, that the domain is ju, is even more congested and busier than my lovely marae. So, you know, that is crazy.
And it's a popular walking area as well. They leave from the back of the domain to go round Pa Road.
Right.
And so people have to navigate fast-moving traffic just across the road there. So it is state highway and we are, there is a concern locally. I mean, my children and I, uh, uh, do experience that area.
Yeah. Well, I'm pleased that the, the mayor has raised this as something that we could throw our weight behind. And I would ask all of our, us, our councillors, because it's such a beautiful part of, um, of our city over there and we need to keep it safe.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. So, Joe's gonna, um, put some words up there. So not only will we receive the report, but we'll also record our support for the reduction or the, 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 uh, the, the reduc, yeah, the extension of the speed limit. Out of Little River.
Counterduction.
Yeah, so, so that, um, yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll find some particular wording, but we can, we can resolve that as part of our receiving your report today.
That's appreciated.
Presumably you'd like to move this.
I'd love to move it, yeah, thank you.
Well, I might take James as the second, uh, given that, um, we've had that quarter. So, um, is there any discussion? And it's not?
Um, yeah, if I can just add to the discussion about the Little River Coop Town speed limits. Um, the answer to your question, James, is over a long period of time regularly and repeatedly. Um, and that's really discussions at the community board table and engagement with NZTA, but probably more to the point, attempted engagement with NZTA a lot of the time. The view of the Little River community expressed very strongly at the time that the speed limit was reduced from seventy to sixteen was that the speed limit through the Little River township should be fifty. Um, and the hundred-k speed limit between the end of Little River, and I agree that it ends, um, the sixty ends way too early, and Coop Town, is a real anomaly. It's a very short distance of a hundred k's. The tendency is for people to pick up speed in the lower speed zones to get to a hundred by the time they're entering the hundred zone. And at night time, it's much worse, that behaviour is much worse than it is during the day because of a complete lack of any, um, enforcement. So, um, yeah, I absolutely support, um, any wording that would lead to an extension of the sixty. Ideally, in my world, right the way from the beginning of Little River to the bottom of the hill as you, um, come out of Coop Town. But there is a view in the Little River community that the Little River part of it in the built-up area should be fifty, not sixty.
Thank you.
We're just trying to get some wording, but essentially extending, um, support the community board's, um, request to, um, NZTA to, uh, adjust the speed limits as appropriate, you know. Um, and then we'll just leave it generic like that, but we'll, we'll get in behind you.
No, that's fantastic, thank you.
All right, um, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, that's carried. There you go, you didn't know you were gonna leave with that today, so well done.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, the next one is the Waitei Coastal Burwood Community Board, Kelly Barber. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, once again, I'm enjoyed, uh, enjoyed, enjoying being joined by Chris Turner, extraordinary. Um, yeah, first up is, uh, community boards, uh, under delegation. Um, I'll take this all as read, but, um, so one of the first things we've done is, uh, is had Beebe Frail appointed to the, uh, Orion Customer Advisory Panel, um, which I know she's excited about. Um, we've also had, uh, approval of public notification process of proposed lease for the Christchurch Slot, uh, Slot Car Raceway Incorporated Group. So we're kind of excited about that. They're, um, uh, moving into our area, I've been across the other side of town. Uh, they came and gave us a little presentation at community board. Um, fascinating, uh, array of, uh, of boys' toys that they have, um, which we, uh, we were promised to go off. I think James might have had a, had a crack before. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, the other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is just some of the discretionary response fund, um, allocations that we've had. Um, I suspect that the publicly, public probably see this as some of the kind of best work we do at the city council. So we fund things like Parklands at Play, I Love New Brighton, uh, Dallington, Avondale, Burwood combined events in two thousand twenty-one. Um, these are really positive for the community. And, uh, when you see the people participating in them, particularly families, um, it, it gives you a, a real good feel about, uh, where we're spending our money, uh, in these sorts of areas. So, moving right along. So, uh, examples of, uh, community projects that we're involved in. Uh, this is, um, a picture of Yvonne Ritchie, who's, uh, spent twenty-five years, um, serving, uh, the Ascot Community Centre. So they're a group that sort of wrangles all the community organisations that want to use that facility. Uh, if you don't know, it's the original, uh, Little Golf, uh, Club headquarters over in the larger QE Two complex. Um, so there, uh, we've asked for expressions of interest, or staff have, um, for, uh, a group to, um, to manage the facility. Um, and there's a whole bunch of, of different groups that, that do use it. Uh, it's one of those community facilities that we have, council facilities that is well-used and they're looking to, um, increase the usage there. Um, one of the other community projects that, um, I'm excited to talk about is the Bridge Street, uh, South Brighton, um, charitable trust. Uh, so they're turning, uh, an old church into a community hub, uh, run by the community. Um, we actually fund them through the community board, uh, but they also got funding through, um, the shovel-ready, the government shovel-ready projects. Uh, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. This is a group that, um, just beavers away. They didn't know where their next dollar was coming from. They could see a real need in the community for a community, uh, facility when, uh, we lost a few in that sort of South Brighton area. Um, they're relentlessly positive and, um, yeah, I'd particularly like to thank council staff who have been helping them sort of plan and facilitate, um, their strategic planning, um, for how they're gonna go forward. So they're really excited to get this, uh, this extra money and they're gonna make a real difference in that community. They've got a little cafe planned, they've got, um, approval to run a number of events during the year. So it could be twenty-first, uh, there's only a few because of, there, there's obviously a few restrictions on, on the noise and, uh, and the frequency of that sort of thing. But again, a really positive, um, thing going on down there. So, progress against the, uh, um, our board plan. Um, obviously, we've, um, we've got Teteiraka Hikuhiku, um, uh, operating in our area because we have a lot of red zone, um, area in our two wards. Um, this is one of the projects that they've funded, um, and, um, to the tune of twenty thousand dollars. This is the, uh, in the Odekarro Avon River Corridor. It's the Eco Action Nursery Trust at work. So the great thing about this is it's eco-action, uh, not just eco-talk. Um, so they basically facilitate the planting of plants and all they need is the manpower. And the manpower they get for these particular, um, plantings are often schoolkids who get really involved in, in the whole process. Um, a few of the community board members have been down there, myself, Jo Zervos and, uh, and Phil was down there for one and James has been at some, um, Phil just brought a shovel this time, so. We, we didn't need to, uh, to begin the big stu, big stuff. Um, but yeah, there, it's, it's a great feel-good activity in the area. It's, um, it's making the place look good and it's, it's, it's really involving the, uh, the locals. So, yeah, really excited about that. Um, and also another thing, uh, that we've had against, uh, progressing our community plan is the roads and transportation links is, is important to us. Um, and I think I mentioned last time that we had Richard Osborne and Mike Davidson out for a bus trip, which went around having a look at the roads. Um, so that was good, enough said. Um, community board matters of interest, I just want to highlight the Community Watch Burwood Pegasus Group. Um, they do some great, uh, work in the area, they're affiliated to the national body. Uh, local police have mentioned how great they are. I mean, they've been out in two hundred and eighty-five patrols, a thousand and ninety volunteer hours. Uh, they're a small but really committed group, um, and they're happy to have people come out with them. So they do a lot of work, uh, for the police, just sort of, um, being an extra set of eyes, good communicators, um, and, and great service of the community. So I wanted to highlight that. And that is about all, unless you have any questions.
Have you been out with them?
Uh, not yet.
Yeah, no, do it, I, I did it when I was the MP for the area. So it's a great, uh, community service and, uh, just, just great men and women who just get out there at night time and keep our community safe. It's a great service.
They have fantastic suppers too at all their meetings, you know, which, which may have something to do with the.
Well, that's always a good judge.
Yeah, the, uh, the membership.
Uh, Pauline and then Jimmy.
Thank you, thanks for a great report. It's always exciting to see something going on in the east. And I'm particularly impressed with those plantings and the number of people turning out. It's just incredible the way people are getting in behind our city. My question is on, uh, seven point two with the Archery Club.
Sure.
Um, and I see the community board has requested and received staff advice, in particular around issues raised during the hearings panel's process. I'm just wondering if there's any progress there because I think the panel recommended that the board work with the club to try and identify a more fit-for-purpose location. Have you got an update on that or is that too soon?
Well, it is kind of, it's fairly early. I mean, staff made, um, a recommendation for the old golf driving range, I think it was. Um, and, um, yeah, so there's been some discussion around that. I mean, we've also, we've been talking about it a bit as to other potential sites. Um, but I think that, um, yeah, staff will come back with, uh, with a recommendation and then take it up with the club.
So staff have been discussing with the club, um, already on potential options of where, where they could move to.
Oh, excellent.
So it's, it's progressing.
Oh, that's excellent, thank you very much.
Hope you get a solution. Um, I met Neera Lee Fairhill at that club and, um, and my only time I've ever, you know, had a go, got a balls off. Um, well, I'm sure that it was just luck, you know, it was not, it certainly wasn't skill. But, um, it was, it, it was, um, yeah, no. And it's, it's a great sport, you know, so I do hope that you find a solution, um, that works for everyone. Uh, Jimmy and then Aaron.
Thank you. Uh, sorry. Thank you for the, uh, report, very impressed. My question is in relation to the five point one and a five point two. These two community centre, Esco Community Centre and Park Nine Community Centre, both are community, uh, centre facility is owned by council or is partnership of by the community?
Uh, they're owned by council.
Oh, yeah, by council. So the, uh, regarding those, the group, existing or new group, is, uh, council unique, the kind of rental tenants?
Um, yeah.
So, so for, for Ascot, um, it's out for expressions of interest for someone else to manage the facility? So council will still own it, but, um, someone else will take the management, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, 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 that's right.
So that's, that's out at the moment for expressions of interest?
Okay, but if they have the kind of sub-tenancy, they are just engaged with the, those, the.
So the, the people that manage it then will hire out or, um, they'll manage the bookings for the facility.
Okay, but the council can charge the tenant's fee from least rental, you know, any basis or not?
I don't think that's what the, the intention is, no. So it'll be, um, it's not, it's, they're managing it on behalf of council so that it saves the council's resources for having to do it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I, I did notice the activation of the community was the intention not being a booking service, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Looking for something a little bit more, um, on board than that. Aaron, four seconds.
Yeah, so the, um, I was just looking at the, uh, the leasing, I agree, archery is a, is a great sport. Um, and, uh, and for me, Neera Lee Fairhill was a, a legend of this country because she competed at the Commonwealth Games in a chair, not in the, uh, not as a disabled athlete, but as an athlete, and, uh, and won. Um, had you considered combining the archery club with the community patrol? Because that would really lower the chroma.
That's something that we can take to the board, yeah, I, I see where you're going with that.
Sorry, I have to say that's the best one yet from you, Aaron. That, uh, that, that one, that one deserves to be written up in the chief executive's report. Yeah. Thank you for bringing humour and joy to our council table. And thank you, uh, Kelly, for you and your team and Chris, we miss you. Um, uh, thank you for what, um, you're doing in your community as well, it was a great report.
Thank you for the ongoing support, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. And the, now the Waimeiro, uh, Bendleton Waimeiro Hereward Community Board. Eh? Oh, sorry, um. You can move it and Phil can second it. I will put that motion, all those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. And now I'll hand over to the, um, David Cartwright and Bridget Williams, thank you.
Good morning, all. Um, uh, I'll take our reports as read, there was no part A's. All right.
Cool.
Uh, Bridget's gonna start with this.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, the Graham Dingle Foundation has been going around the different wards, so we were lucky enough to have them. And the Canterbury manager spoke to the board about the work of the foundation, in particular the Kiwi Can Life Skills Programme, they run in schools across the country. And it was exciting to know that the board, that in our area, they are currently at Burnside Primary School and Bishopdale School. So that was great to have them come to the public forum. Uh, and the other thing with the public forum as well that we had is the Belfast Netball Club came along. And this issue was actually shared within the Papanoi Innes Ward as well. So I believe that the club has, um, come to that ward too. But the president of the club spoke to the board about the safety concerns they have with the changing rooms, the toilets and the netball courts at Shingle Reserve. And the group is likely to submit to the L T P regarding the upgrade of the courts and facilities because, yeah, they are not very good. Uh, staff are also following up regarding. Staff are also following up regarding the current status of the building and the cleaning regimes as well. David?
Thank you. Obviously, school holidays at the moment and with the looming Christmas holidays coming up, sort of November, December, Willow Bank have come to us, again through the public forum, so that just sort of highlights what Caroline Potter was talking about earlier, the information that we derive from the members coming and talking to us is second to none. So obviously, a parking issue here at Willow Bank. We've got the council team or the staff looking at how we might be able to bring some improvements to this area. Island Stream is also one of our top priorities. We're looking to sort of see what we can do to increase its water flow on a more regular basis, not only for aesthetics but also for the wildlife. Oh, back one. I'll have you answering your questions.
So you've got staff working on that parking issue? Yes, yes. Okay, so we can expect to see something.
And obviously with, I mean, it had been a, it's more of a problem now than it have ever used to be. There is some, there is a suspect that there is, the local neighbour has parked, painted some, or there is a resident potentially who has parked his own yellow lines down the road, or so the rumour goes. So we're just looking to see if they're actually legit or not.
But even so, is that all Willow Bank traffic?
The bulk of it, yes.
So it really needs a joined-up solution.
Indeed.
Perhaps even a car park and a shovel bus.
I'm aware when I spoke to us that they had asked the local neighbours if they were prepared to sell some land. It's under the air corridor, no, a noise perimeter. So the limitations of what can be built in that area are, you know, are obviously limited. But the neighbouring properties, neighbouring property hasn't, isn't that keen to sell at this time.
Right, okay. All right, questions? I'm going to expect that Sam and Aaron are going to move in second. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
And our last, no, not our last, the next to last is the Waipuna Hawes Wharwharbe Ricketon Community Board. Mike Mora and Andre Moore.
Morning.
Welcome.
Good morning, all. Gives us great pleasure to present our report to you today. We do have one part A and that's the approval of the concept design for the Hornby Centre concept design. So we're very pleased with that and we just hope that now that concept design is been accepted or will be accepted, that we see it as a shovel-ready project in Hornby. Whether it is or not, that's the way we see it and we just want to get on and get the job done. Also, in our, in our report, we touch on a lot of things that we've done, like, you know, road naming and no parking, typical mundane things. But the, there's some other things here that I'd just like to raise your attention to and that's the Hawes Wharwharbe Ricketon Activities and Services Guide for Older Adults. It's a lovely publication and we're just so proud of it and we've just got to get that out and network it as much as we possibly can. So just, you know, appreciation for that. And the other thing, significant events and projects in our area, you'll see when we get to the slides, we've had the Ricketon Expo. But I just want to mention in advance is Hello Hornby event is planned for Saturday the 30th of March next year, so that's something that the community really, really appreciate. And there is other things like we've had, in our report, you'll see that we've had the Ricketon on the roll, but also I mentioned the Hornby Day next year. But also Hawes Wharwharbe celebrating Christmas-themed events at the Hawes Wharwharby Community Hub. So just, there's lots of things happening, some with their neighbours, of course. And anyway, I don't want to dwell too much on that, but we'll get on to our presentation in there. Please, Andre. And we've got the, can we just go back to the other one? That's right, that's Ricketon on the Roll. So that's, that's an event that was held on the 22nd of September where people came from the community and to talk about what things we can do in Ricketon. So that was a useful, very useful event. And then this one, at our last board meeting, we, I had the pleasure of presenting Gretchen Smith, the principal of Faranui School. Just to remind people, it was called the Riwe Alley School. I don't know whether everybody realises that, but that's, that school established a strong link with the Chinese community. And one of the things that Gretchen, in her time as the principal, she arrived in 2011, but she'd worked for the school before becoming the principal. And she was very active in the March terrorist attack in supporting the Muslim families in the area and worked very, very closely with them and their children to help them through that time. But the other interesting fact that I want to mention about the Riwe Alley Faranui School is that since 2011, the role has virtually tripled from 120 students to 330 students. So it's gone from six classes to 16 classes and it now has children from 32 cultures who speak 46 different languages. So that's something of, it's amazing, really. It's, oh, I'm just getting shivers down my spine thinking about it, that is, what a wonderful school and to have that many cultures and that many languages at that school, it's very, very special and to see it growing in role as well is really encouraging. So it was, it was really good. But Limwood, you've inherited Gretchen, so I'm sure she's going to be an asset to your community. Thanks, Andre. Ricketon Hoops Event, that was held last week. And, no, it was earlier this week. Anyway, it was, that's in the car park next to the, to our new Ricketon Community Centre. So we had a basketball event there to, during the school holidays. So that was, that was very well attended and had free sausage sizzle as well. So that was, you know, a lovely event organised by our staff. And then we've got the Waipuna Horse, yeah, the Quaife Road issue and I'll now pass you over to Andre to speak about this matter that was quite passionate, our board, most of us are about this. So anyway, Andre.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So yeah, well, initially it's come up at our board, so the board's yet to come to decision what recommendation it would be making. So council have released their Community Facilities Network Plan, which states that the city-wide, citywide, there are currently no significant major geographical gaps in the network for council or non-council facilities taken into account. I'm looking at the Hawes Wharwharbe part of the map here. Naturally, some might see a significant geographical gap here. So there has been just because some concern from residents around Hawes Wharwharbe that we aren't planning for sufficient community spaces in future. We are growing very fast, many new subdivisions popping up, many thousands of people moving to the area going forward. Of course, this report came to the board, was deemed a surplus land, you can understand why it was done so. Of course, for any, you know, potential community use or community facilities, you'd have to put forward a business case. But if a community's not consulted, of course, there's no possible business case that could ever come out of it. So in this part of Quaife Road, so recently 1,200-year-old Matai tree stumps were uncovered by the Hawes Wharwharbe Residents Association. Sorry, I don't have it in the slide, but there is a lovely picture here that the star covered of our, of our tree stumps. So they're hoping to further investigate what's under the surface there.
Yes.
And there is some interest from local Iwi. So there's just concern that, you know, before the land was ripped up, used for a subdivision, that any excavation work could be done, which could prevent the ability for carvers to access materials, for example. So just something we're very mindful of and that there is interest there.
How old are those stumps, Andre?
Oh, up to 1,200 years old.
Yes, significant.
So yeah, it's totally understood why this land is deemed as surplus. And obviously, in 10 to 20 years down the track, it seems very unlikely we'll ever be using the words land and surplus in the same sentence in the Hawes Wharwharbe area. So obviously, there's a number of factors involved in how these decisions are made in the process, but just when this, when this board has had sports club and community groups come to us earlier in the year crying out for new spaces, we're growing so fast. And then, of course, we have surplus land, of course, you know, we had to investigate exactly what options were out there and find out where we're at, take a snapshot of our community, how it looks now, how it's going to look in 10 to 15 years' time. So that's what further work had been done by the board in investigating this.
We're just looking into the future and we understand that that land had to be brought to, as a, as a deal to get the land for the retention, detention system. But there is an opportunity, could it be, could it be found to actually set aside a portion of that land because we know it's going to be growing in that area and we know that there is going to be need for land for community facilities as well? So what we're saying is, looking into the future, and that's what we're here, we're not here just to make decisions for today, we're here to make decisions and recommendations into the future. So to sell all of that land is a concern. Because we don't want to be going around in another 20 years' time and buying houses and bowling them over so we can get green space. What's proposed, of course, as the developments go, is that there will be pocket parks in there, 3,000 square metre pocket parks, but that's not what we really need as a, as a community growing. We need a bigger area of land to be set aside for future community use and space. So we'll leave it at that, will we, Andre?
Yeah, that's us, thank you.
I'm afraid you've taken up your full 10 minutes, so, but I presume we'll be hearing more about the work that you're getting done on that, on that matter.
Yes.
Yep. You'd like to move it, Jimmy? Wait, wait. You can debate it, you can debate.
Okay, not debate, just comments.
You're moving it and?
Not debate, I move, I move, yeah.
Seconded by Anne, okay.
Okay, thank you, yeah. There's a community particular concern, you know, particularly regarding to the surplus of piece of land, but actually it's not considered faster growth population in that kind of of the south-west area and like the, the, like Mike Mora mentioned earlier, it's not a pocket park committed those faster growth committing needs, yeah. But the staff were, actually, on the past Tuesday, they were briefing to us, so we, the community board all have this kind of concern. But formal this meeting agenda will be presented to the community board on next week, so the community board still eligible, you know, to express their concern and bring to the council's table through all the kind of the process and the channel. But regarding to the result of the kind of report, I would like to move, yeah.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Thank you, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And the last of the community board reports, certainly by no means least, Waikora Limwood Central Heathkit Community Board, Alexandra Davids, thank you.
Kia ora kua tō and I have Aranui Grace as my amazing clicker today. It's nice to have a friend. So thank you so much for having us this morning. We'll take the report as read. We have no part As today, but have a few things that we'd like to share with you. So we have made obviously a few decisions in the last month, one of these being a lease agreement with Avebury House Community Trust to manage Avebury House as a community building. The lease agreement has finally gone through with the newly opened O Power Public Library and a discretionary response fund contribution grant was made to the Salvation Army Christchurch East Financial Mentoring Programme. Back to Avebury House, we would really love to be making the use of facilities more user-friendly, not just obviously in our part of town, but across the whole city. It would be fantastic to see. So community use of heritage parks, the board have discussed the challenges that communities are experiencing when wanting to use heritage parks for events and functions. In a nutshell, we seek local groups to run these facilities and encourage them to make them flourish as social enterprises. But then unfortunately, we hamstring, hamstring them with the rules. Avebury House is a popular community facility for family celebrations because of its beautiful setting and reasonable pricing, but the lawn cannot be used for the use of furniture, marquees and gazebos, which severely limits the scope of use of the facility. The board has requested staff to work creatively with the community group to find ways that this situation can be resolved and we understand there is a process underway and there are solutions being sought, so we are heartened by that. Moving on to spray-free Regley Park. So Michael Reynolds presented at the community board meeting on the 31st at our public forum and he was presenting on behalf of Roy Mata Food Commons. So on the 29th of September, the Roy Mata Food Commons posted this photo on their Facebook page and the group has been working alongside park staff to achieve a spray-free zone in the park and they are having great success up to this point, which is really cool. The Summit Road Society and Te Hapa o Nati Feke have been the recipients of $1 million for a shovel-ready project restoring the Evoke Valley Stream. This is a one-to-one matching fund, so the group came to speak to the board. They have already raised $700,000 of their share of the matching amount and were seeking the board's support for an application to the Ministry for the Environment for the remaining $300,000. The board wishes them luck and hoping to hear about that soon. We have again, which is great, seen the arrival of the Godwitz. The Avon Heathkit Istiri has welcomed back the first of the Godwitz from Alaska who have made their eight-day, 11,000-kilometre journey back to their feeding spots. About 125 bar-tailed Godwitz arrived on the 14th of September and another 196 a few days later from their breeding grounds on the other side of the world. There are many more that are expected to arrive over the next few weeks. The Avon Heathkit Istiri Ihotai Trust updated the board recently about the importance of the istiri as part of the East Asian Australian Flyway, one of the most significant biological features on the planet. We're very lucky to have it in our area. And we have been working with community on a media session. So following a discussion with the Heathkit Village Project on the challenges of promoting the Mahi community groups to in the areas, staff arranged a working with media workshop specifically for the suburbs who receive the Bay Harbour News. Community groups wanted to know how to get their stories into the paper and how to best report back on their projects to funders. Groups have found it difficult with everything else they are working on to make time to write articles for social media papers and also complete their reports back to funding organisations. So staff had organised through Oldham, the assistant editor from the Otago Daily Times, who until recently was on secondment to the Star Media Group. And he was there to deliver this workshop. The session was held on the ninth of September, hosted by Heathkit Valley Community Association and their community centre, with around ten in attendance from Sumna Bay's Union Trust, Sumna Community Residents Association, the City Mission, staff from Maticutaku Takutaku Waltham Development Project and Taylor's Mistake Surf Life Saving Club with the Heathkit Village Project. So this has been a workshop that has really helped these groups and is allowing them to feedback not only the issues they are facing, but also the amazing Mahe and events happening in their communities. And just to finish off, next time we will be presenting to council, we will have a new board member. So we're looking forward to that coming to fruition. That is all.
I've already voted. Just a reminder to everyone that lives in the central ward that the date for returning your ballots for the place left, sadly by Sally Buck, closes the day before the general election, so Friday the sixteenth of October, you need to have them in the post by.
Suggesting Monday.
Suggesting Monday next week, so that's very close. It is next week, isn't it? Monday next week.
I need to get mine in.
And, yeah, so it's really important that people do vote, but they can be physically brought into the council.
Or Turanga.
Or Turanga. Or any, oh no, the ward. Linwood Library. So they are the three places they can be brought on to, Linwood Library, Turanga and the Christchurch City Council offices. They can be brought in here until Friday at midday, am I right? Friday at midday.
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me be a question for Joe. Do we know what the turnout's like so far for voting?
Is it yesterday thirteen point six percent? I mean, the trouble was, was that we originally arranged the ballot or staff organised the ballot, the independent electoral roll that they hold, organised the ballot for the month after the election and the election got moved by a month. So hence we are right up against it in that regard. You'd like to move that? And a quick word. So Sarah moved and seconded by Jake. All right, Sarah?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for the report and just mention as well something that's popped up in the meantime with the spray free, because it's great that Roy Mata Food Commons and that part of Radley Park are going to be spray free. But we've got residents in Waltham now getting their street together to make their street spray free, because of course our streets still have glyphosate as the weed killer that's being used. And people, when they realise that, you can opt out. And so there's a resident who's trying to rally her whole street to get their street spray free and just to take responsibility themselves for pulling out the odd weed and those kind of things, which is going to be really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. Thank you very much. And we now move on to reserve revocation, one-two-two Caledonian Road, St Albans. Do I have a mover for that? Pauline Cotter, seconded Mike Davidson. Is there any discussion? There isn't. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. Thank you for your impassioned plea at the end of the table. The Marshland Spencerville and Kainga Speed Management Report, item number fifteen. And perhaps if I take a mover from one board and a second from another. Mike Davidson moved, seconded by James Daniels. Is there any discussion?
I think the board chair covered it quite well today. The vote was eight-two, so it was well supported by both community boards. So I'll be supporting it today.
Thank you. Erin?
So I just had two questions. They were around the two. The first one being was, because it was raised by another community board today, the extra traffic that's going to end up on Cranford Street. When you lower the speed of a parallel road and then open a hundred K motorway just over here, you will take traffic off Marshland Road and put it on to, I didn't say the S, and put it on to the motorway. And so that will be an outcome of this. Yet we just had complaints. So one was, was that a consideration? And then, it is? Okay. So you're okay with the extra traffic on the motorway going down?
Well, we're not okay with the extra traffic on the motorway, but that wasn't actually the decision we were making. The actual reduction on Marshland Road is going to be not for a long time. But actually reduce the traffic on there will encourage people to go faster anyhow, so it's not a good outcome.
Right. And then the other question is around a speed planning model. But when you create an unnatural environment like a sixty K and what used to be a hundred K, no, no, it's come down incrementally, what does the behaviour act like? Because often we get told that, you know, you narrow up a road or you put in traffic calming measures. Well, this is kind of the opposite because it's a big open country road.
This particular one was, is the only part of the section, of the overarching section that was left out in order to look at other traffic calming measures and other ways of addressing the safety issues. And over that time, and you know, you'll see from the report that it's crystal clear that the increased amount of budget that would have to be found to even begin to make an impact in relation to the comparison with the speed limit would be, it simply wouldn't be a cost effective option. I mean, but all of these matters were considered by the two community boards. All right. Is there any other debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Erin Kiwan voted against. Right. Outcome of property review process, fifty-five Woodles Road, Akaroa. Andrew, I'm assuming you want to move it. I mean, we've had all these addressed by the community boards as they've come through, so it's relatively crystal clear. Sarah seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. The Hornby Centre Concept Design. And I'm assuming Jimmy would like to move and seconded by Anne Galloway. Are there any questions? Have we got staff here for the session? We have. Yeah. You'll note from the agendas changed, from, well, the resolutions that we're looking at is that note escalation cost of future proof the project are included within the budget. Yep. That's the budget that was set in the long-term plan.
I've got questions on the PX report, so I'm just wondering how you want to deal with that.
Ah, well, we can defer this and then move on.
Yeah, but however though, it might, depending on the answers, that may impact whether or not you'd be supportive of signing off concept plan. My preference would be to hear the stuff in PX and then that could help.
We'll need to go on to PX to discuss the, I'm just wondering whether we could. We would have to go on to PX to do that.
We are going to be going to PX anyway, given it's on there.
Would council be considerate and kind and allow me to just put through item eighteen so that I've cleared all the community board issues prior to this one and then I'll move the council into PX? All right. So you'll move eighteen, Tim Scandrap, seconded by Melanie Coker. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried. I'll move that the council, we've got no one outside staff attending, have we? That the council go into the, into public excluded to consider attachments to the report under separate cover. Yeah, so I'll move that, seconded by Jake. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed, they know that's carried.
Gosh, where is? Item seventeen.
Need to do lots of things with that consultant.
Put your little.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is that it?
I know what I'm doing.
Finger wasn't just moving on that.
There we go.
In more years. If you went with staff. You'd go with the recommendation.
Yeah.
Reputation suicide. It's just been done to these and the community will just lose it.
Can you make that adjustment in the LTP budget?
Right processes. The thing is, we could have done it the other day. So we could have done it today if we'd given.
Alright, now. We didn't get to moving. Didn't we? But Jimmy, you moved the resolution on that. I thought, I thought Anne seconded it. Are you moving the community board one, not the new one?
Well, that's not the community board resolution. We've, we've changed the. We've changed it to noting included within the LTP budget. So there's no additional budget. So can I have staff back? Because we've got some more questions. Sorry. Do apologise.
I know you were trying to get out of it, but there goes. Mike.
Thank you. Just question.
Item seventeen. Gosh, where is... Item seventeen.
Need to do lots of things with that consultant.
Put your little...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is that it? I know what I'm doing, I just...
Finger wasn't just moving when that...
There we go.
In four years, they just... They'd give us another one.
Is that... If you went with staff... You'd go with the recommendation.
But then, I don't know, just leaving going out was a...
But only if you went...
Reputation suicide. It's just been done to these and the community will just lose it. In the last time...
Can you make that adjustment in the LTP budget? All right, processes and the processes. The thing is, we could have done it the other day, but we've... So we could have done it today if we'd given...
All right, now... We didn't get to moving. Didn't we? But Jimmy, you moved the resolution on that. I thought... I thought Anne seconded it. Are you moving the community board one, not the new one? Well, that's not the community board resolution. We've changed the... We've changed it to noting included within the LTP budget. So there's no additional budget. So can I have staff back because we've got some more questions? Sorry, do apologize. I know you were trying to get out of it, but there you go. Mike?
Thank you. Just question on bike park. How much bike parking is there? Because I can only see in this diagram four. So I'm just wondering what the total number is.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but there's four or five on the south side of the building by the car park. But there's a large bike park area on the north side, just off Waterloo Road, partly under the overhang roof of the building. It'd be a hundred plus.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Aaron?
Similar questions to Mike. Just the disability parking? There's none marked on the design that I looked at?
I think that, yeah, I think the drawing itself hasn't got the symbol on there. There's about six car parks, again, just on the south side of the building towards the west side. But you can see the hatching on the... Sort of that they have the hatched strips between the parks.
Oh, you can?
Do you want to borrow someone's class?
Oh, so those six that face right down towards the orange bit?
So I think if you look...
Yes.
Okay.
On page eleven, they demonstrated on there.
Yep, Melanie and then Jimmy.
Carolyn asked me to ask this about disability. But I was going to ask you, can you promise that there'll be no issues around it? I know it says that it's been consulted, you know, shown with the disability sector, but that happened with the... Napa and Hawaii as well, and there's been issues. So can you talk to that?
Yeah, we're having... We've had repeated discussions with representatives that cover a number of groups in the disability sector. They've been happy with it to date.
Have you... Has it included like where observers will be for the pole and things like that? Which is sort of the issue in Napa and Hawaii?
Yes, parking of wheelchairs in the pool area, all those sorts of things. We've sort of run through from the car park, out of the vehicle, through into the pool. Support people.
And where barriers...
Change.
Barriers will be, won't be in the line of sight of people's eyes or anything like that? I don't know. Jimmy?
The paragraph three regarding to the escalation cost. Can you please talk to us? You cover what time the period? Which year, time period?
So in terms of question, the budget of thirty five point seven million dollars, in terms of within that Q S estimate allows escalation costs through the delivery of the project. So if it was signed off based on the timeline that's currently on budget, escalation costs have been included within that.
Okay, if that's true, because the community, a moment they try to the foundation, you know, can get more kind of funding, fill the gap to build up a moment where our option for the hydrotherapy pool. Whether this escalation can cover some of them, portion of them or not?
So in terms of talking about the concept design and the Q S estimate, came in a figure that was required to put the hydrotherapy pool in. Through the design process, we're making every allowance possible to add that pool if we don't receive all the funding in full. So in terms of it will be added on to the end of the building to go through that. Could the escalations with the contingency cover some of the costs of the hydrotherapy pool? At the moment, at the start of the project, escalations and contingency are exactly that in terms of they're not for increasing the scope of the facility. And we're not making those mistakes again.
Okay, so you mean there are no additional costs any time, you know, to build up those new, the kind of hydrotherapy pool? No additional?
Sorry, um...
For clarity, if I think is what you're asking?
Yes.
The contingency budget will not be utilized for the hydrotherapy pool. It will be kept for contingency.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, the community are fundraising for the hydrotherapy.
Yeah, I understand. But my question is, because the foundation need to take a time, you know, whether any time you've attached to fill up those one, whether have additional costs?
Is there a period beyond which the hydrotherapy pool can't go in? Or can it go in after the build's complete?
It can go in after the build's complete. We reflect back.
So there's no constraint on the fundraising time for the community?
No, just to be really clear though, in terms of... In terms of if they were to have the hydrotherapy pool complete at the same time this building was being built by whatever construction firm does it, yes, there will be a timeframe on that and we'll work through that. If it gets to a point in time and it needs to be added by another firm afterwards, then yes, we'll work out whether that is. And that could be in two years, three years, five years. It's a bit of a moving feast.
But there might be an additional cost to the retrofitting?
What we did say in terms of before we went to market, in terms of to include the hydrotherapy pool as part of the project for when we go to market, in terms of we would need that information by Christmas, by November, but in terms of...
The information as in...
In terms of whether the funds were available to be included in that procurement. But we can shift that out as we go through the project. So like Taya or Kiwi Two, where we added the hydrotherapy pool halfway through the project, we can make adjustments through that.
Can you alert potential contractors or through the procurement process that there may be an additional opportunity for them?
Yes, that is part of it because that's part of the concept.
And they could potentially contribute themselves as part of the awarding of the tender? That is an entirely appropriate process, as I understand it, for procurement?
Yes, we can ask that question.
Hmm, good.
Thank you.
Sam?
I'd love to find a construction company that does that.
Oh, well, I can tell you the one that did the library contributed to the operational cost of the South Base.
I thought it was the Christchurch Foundation.
The South... Yeah, but through the Christchurch Foundation.
Anyway.
The Christchurch Foundation is a pass-through organisation.
I'm sorry, I lost.
They developed a partnership with South Base.
Oh, right, oh, right. They're passing it through, okay.
Yes. So there are huge benefits to the ratepayers of Christchurch.
We'll wait for the review.
Sam?
So five point eight, which is around the hydrotherapy pool again. Do we know what that would roughly cost? About two point...
Two point six.
So we'd need... They'd need to raise two point six million if they have it included. And so it's got the Rotary and the Local Residents Association working together to raise. Have we had any thoughts on whether that is feasible?
Yes, we work with them. We met with them last week. There's two pretty key discussions they've got coming up for them. But they've got a fundraising plan of where the money could come from.
Okay.
But they've got two discussions within the next fortnight. That will give them a fairly good indication of where their success for that may lay.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand what you've based the wet area size on, like for the main, like lane pole. How you've come up with eight hundred and ten square metres? And I'm just wondering how that relates to the other pools that we've been building? Like, how do you determine how much wet space?
It was part of the concept design that the scope was approved for the pool. So in terms of starting with the size of the pool, which was the eight lanes to work through that, and then working backwards through the approved scope by councillors at the time.
It just seems quite significantly more than other pools that we're building. And I just don't quite understand how one community gets a really small pole and the other gets a really big one.
In terms of to go through if we're making comparisons to another project in terms of it has a lane swing pool and has a bombing pool.
I don't think that's appropriate to put that to staff. Thank you. Pauline and then Aaron.
In terms of our facility strategy?
Pauline and then Aaron.
Mine was a supplementary to where Melanie was going with... Where do we sit our accessibility working group into these projects? When does this get run past the group in this process? It should have already been gone to this group earlier. I'm just wondering if we can get clarity for that so that...
So we've already been talking to members of that group.
But Aaron, you're on it.
Yeah, it hasn't been formally through the group. And that's something we need to work through with Rachel.
So who have you been talking to?
The disability people, that group, sort of likes of Rachel.
Oh, the staff here, you mean?
Sorry, I can't remember names off the top of my head.
But aren't there external people that you consulted with about the disability accessibility?
Yes.
So but what we've tried to set up is a group with all those members, including Carolyn on it and Aaron. And I'm not sure if any other councillors are on it. But that's where we want these things to come through here so that we're assured that everything is covered.
Sorry, to be clear, in terms of under six point eight and six point nine in the concept design, through the COVID period, in terms of there was discussions with a number of accessibility groups where they provided feedback on the design. There's also an audit that's been completed of the concept design to work through. So to make sure that it does meet the requirements that we have. The challenge that you will be aware of is in terms of when we're going through and looking at accessibility, what suits one particular demographic may not be perfect for another one. So we're trying to work through what's best for, what we can do with the money we've got. But certainly it will come through the group. We've spoken to a number of accessibility groups. They can get the arrangements through that COVID time, but there was an audit that will be completed as part of that as well.
So then the supplementary question again is what is the point of our working group here?
Yeah, I'm just setting up some meetings next week just to try and work through some of these issues. So if you could leave that for a week?
This particularly was Aaron brings it up every time. And I know the challenges of trying to please everybody, but we know that a lot of facilities we've built in the past have had the big tick, but they've had a lot of negative comments with certain people that find it difficult to work in it.
So I don't know whether, how much the group reported into your committee, Tim. No, 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 but he reports to your committee.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, we... Yeah, I'm going to meet with you guys next week and try and work through some of these challenging issues. Thank you. Aaron?
Nothing to report, unfortunately. But just on here is ACC, is that accessible? Is that what?
Is that on one of the room plans?
Yeah, yeah, so on the plan for the pool.
Yes.
So ACC is accessible? Is that what that means? Because when you blow it up, it goes fuzzy, so you can't see what's in the room or the layout of the room.
What page are you on, Aaron?
I'll go, I'm on one hundred and twelve. Under site plan, unless there's a better one to blow up. Yeah, there's a couple there and then there's the bed one. And then there's one down by hydrotherapy. But I can't tell from that whether that has a toilet in there.
So page one hundred and fourteen.
That's better?
Maybe slightly better. So yes, the two large accessible change spaces have both got toilets in them?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And are any of the changing... Any of the spaces, the changing spaces design that was brought to the council?
We... I don't know if we've actually got that far through the design detail wise.
Right, because they... The thing with the... So the changing spaces concept is world leading. And we don't... And Dawn Tribe, when she first arrived to get one into the convention centre, so it's an accessibility, it'll be the best in the country. Won't be because it was too late because the square meters you need, you need fourteen square metres. And we couldn't get it through. They wouldn't make an adjustment, even though they hadn't started to fit out. It wasn't deemed important enough. But in our facilities, I would have thought if we could have one, would be good. All the others look like they will be fine. Even though they've got swing doors rather than sliders, which is...
We're still working through that.
Normally they say cavity sliders versus swing doors, but... Yeah, but all the ramps going into every pole, fantastic. I think that's a first for Christchurch, as far as I can tell. I haven't seen it anywhere else where someone with... Because it's not just a disabled person being able to go for a swim themselves. They have children and stuff, so they can interact and play with their children in every single pool here, which is fantastic to see. So but just around the changing spaces, if you take that away and can find out if we can fit that in.
Dawn would like to...
Just a question for Nigel and our officer. Is although this is the concept design, recognizing you still will need to go to the disability subcommittee, it's important that it can adjust if appropriate. It will be able to do that, will it?
Yes.
Yes, so it's not locked down, that's what I'm driving at.
It's the concept design, so the changing places you spoke about, I believe just been incorporated in the Limwood, so aware of it and...
Oh, so Limwood gets one? Oh, brilliant.
Right, thank you. All right. Yanni again?
Yeah, it was just regarding the car parking area, the external parking. We had that really cool presentation from Adriana around using impervious sort of materials for stormwater runoff. And I just wondered whether we'd had any progress on that. Because this would... Reading the kind of stuff around the Geotag and the stormwater, it would seem this would be a really good candidate. So I just wanted to check if there was any way that we could check in with that better technology in terms of managing this, the car parking, the hard surfacing.
Have you looked at that?
Yes, yes, we can work through that. I mean, this is very much just a concept design in terms of there's detailed design to go through to pursue that.
So I think you'll find there's some resolutions from the deputation to get staff to consider it.
Sorry, I don't know what you're talking about.
It was this concrete material that was a lot better for the environment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know what it is. I've seen it and I've seen it used, so... But I wasn't obviously there, so...
All right. No, that's cool. I just wanted to say, so it sounds like we can look at it, so that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Just make sure we don't...
Good, right. So I've got a move... Oh, Phil, did you have a question? Okay, I've got a mover and a seconder. So now I'm opening it up to debate. Any discussion? So Jimmy's going to close the debate? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, my fellow councillors.
No, well, I mean, usually I let get the mover to close the debate, so...
May I just start to be start?
You want to start?
Yeah, you can start. I'll come back to you to close.
Thank you, yeah.
Yep, and then... No, no, it's okay, he can open and close as well. That's what the standing orders require, so.
Thank you, the mayor and my fellow councillors. I believe the mayor and my fellow councillor are all read this item. So I just want to highlight some of the crucial points. The first one is the council has been approved the Hornby Centre Facility to be built at a Kial Park at a council meeting on twelve September last year. And also council requests report to the council through the community board with the concept design and update cost estimate for approval. So that's why today the have released a report. And also the community board, the unanimous to support, to occur, and also recommend that a comfortable meeting on fifteen of September, which means the all the community board and also local council fully support this concept design and recommend the council to approve today. And also the community, you know, wider, wider Hornby community and also South West community during the consultation, they earnestly and urgently they would like to the hydrotherapy. This one can be fit in this new Hornby Centre Facility because Hornby have quite a few those elderly people or disabled people, we need this one. But due to the budget is restricted, limited. So a moment I'm understanding that's three option. But I'm happy that any time, you know, the Great Hornby Regional Association, Hornby Rite a moment they are positively for foundation with the rotary and with all those rata foundation. So but probably by the end of this year, a little bit difficult for them get the funding. So I prefer those the kind of fill the gap, not sufficient, not the increase those any of the cost regarding to this one. And this is long awaited the facility for the wider Hornby and South West area. And we are all aware, you know. So please, the mayor and my councillors, you know, to listen to the community. They make the least deputations, I mentioned for several times already. I think we never forget, even last year, they have had God to come here, you know. Please, your animus to support this council, council design to go forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really difficult one because I completely get the passion within the Hornby community for the need for some form of facility. But, you know, at the back of my mind, there's still a real reservation about building on this land. And I know that's been a decision made by previous councils, which I wasn't a part of. But if you look at other projects we've done around the city, we see continual cost blower. And, you know, for me, there's still is real reservations around particularly the car park. And I know there's P X information on that, so I won't go into it. But I just think there are real long-term challenges on the construction of that. The other thing that we do have to bear in mind is, you know, as a city under severe financial pressure, to have a net operating cost of two point eight million a year for this facility, I just wonder whether we could be doing this better. That's not to say they don't deserve a facility or that that community doesn't. But I just wonder whether we severely... You know, we're looking at this in a constructive manner. I think, you know, there are existing facilities out there and perhaps we could have been a bit more deliberate in our approach of using buildings we have currently. That's not to say we wouldn't put a pool somewhere in Hornby. Uh, that's not to say we wouldn't put a pool somewhere in Hornby, but I think if you've got libraries that potentially could be updated, then that might be a far better mechanism at the moment. So I just think there are real financial challenges for the city. It's all very well that people, you know, want this in their community, I completely get that, they deserve something. Um, you know, but in the end, we do have to make some hard choices, so I think by signing this off today, uh, the scale of which it is at. We are indebted ratepayers for generations, uh, again, with another facility in town that quite frankly, we can't afford. And that doesn't even go anywhere near, I think, the construction issues we're going to face with this, excepting there is a contingency budget. I just think the early signs on this already indicate there will be challenges and I don't think it would be responsible of our council today to sign this off, so I won't support it.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think I agree entirely with Sam there. Being a good city councillor, it isn't about putting as much money as you can in in into your patch. Um, advocate strongly on the community board, that's your role, that's the oath that you take. But as a councillor, we know this, your job is to be looking after every single ratepayer and resident. Who calls Christchurch their home? So there will be tough decisions, there'll be competing projects, but your obligation is to the city as a whole. An enormous amount of funding has already or will go into Limwood Pool, the Metro Sports Facility, the recently opened new Brighton Pools and likely Hornby Pool. And we're talking all within the space of a financial year or two for the lion's share of capital spend. Um, we're a city of not even four hundred thousand people. We are under enormous financial pressure as a result of COVID. People are struggling to pay their rates, they're struggling to make ends meet, and we are spending too much as a council and we are borrowing too much as a council. So my strong view is that we need to cool our jets and spend less and borrow less. That will mean that some good projects will have to be deferred, not because it's fun, no one enjoys doing that. But because exercising discipline, financial restraint is what the whole city really needs from us right now. So Hornby Pool won't just be a good facility, it will be a great facility. Heck, there's a thirty six million dollar Warren and Marni masterpiece, but I think taking a breath now. Not approving the concept design plan, considering through an L T P process where you're taking a true big picture approach, where you're putting those competing interests all on the same page. Is the only prudent way to go right now, and I think it's completely irresponsible to be signing off a concept plan today.
Um, Anne?
Uh, so this this is not just about responding to the passion of a community. This is about providing equitable access to um resource that all young people should be able to access. So there, this is not just a pool, this is a library, this is going to provide high tech resources to children and young people who actually don't have access to them at home. So we have to think about ourselves as a city and what the, we have made a commitment for all of our people to have the same opportunity. And this is about providing that opportunity. So this project is not going to become a sacrificial lamb to some philosophy of austerity that will actually end up punishing those most vulnerable in our community. So we will indeed, I will indeed be voting very much in favour of this today.
Um, Andrew?
Thank you, um, I'd like to start by acknowledging and supporting the comments of the two local councillors that have spoken, Jimmy Chen and Anne Galloway. Um, both of whom have been very strong advocates for this facility for as as long as they've been involved and for as long as I can remember. Um, this is the next step in the progress of this project, um, and I believe that it's an important project and one that we should be committed to the delivery of. We've heard through the annual plan process, the level of support and the passion, um, in not only the Hornby community, but more widely in the South West. Um, for this particular project, um, and we saw some elements of angst in the community. At the thought, regardless of where the seed of that thought was sown, um, that the project might be delayed or deferred. And community interest in this project, this was acknowledged by Jimmy Chen just a few minutes ago. Um, the passion of the community in this project isn't just been expressed in the last few months, this has been ongoing for many, many years. Um, and I think we need to acknowledge that. Levels of community expectation are high, um, and I'd like to acknowledge also the energy of the community and their passion for the hydrotherapy pool. Um, and acknowledge the energy and the thought that they're putting into fundraising in the hope that that may be able to be in addition. It would be great to see that resolved as soon as possible, and we heard some comments from staff on that today. Um, the decision to build on this land, which has been referred to. Um, followed a protracted, high profile and very well documented debate, particularly around Denton Park as a suitable site. Um, the Kyle Park decision was made in the context of the known challenges with this land. Um, that decision is behind us, we're now working in the environment that we're in. Being a good city councillor, in my view, is about finding the balance between expenditure, rates, need, equity, levels of service. Strong communities, the health of our communities, learning and knowledge, and that's what libraries are about, activity. And really balancing and finding the balance between all of those attributes. And I think that's exactly what we've got in front of us as we look at the timing of this particular project. Um, I would also remind people that the central city, Metro Sports, Linwood and Brighton are nowhere near Hornby geographically. Um, and of course, what we're trying to do is to build community and reduce the need for travel from one side of the city to the other. So the South West is also bigger than Hornby, this will be a facility that will serve the South West. So, um, yes, there'll be some projects need to be deferred, um, yes, we do need to exercise financial restraint. I don't believe this is one of those projects and I'll be very happy to support this today.
Phil Major?
Thanks, thanks, guys, um, I think if if we look at things a bit different, take the likes of um Paparoa, Old Paparoa Yard. We we've got a lot of stuff that we can sell and get rid of, it's all very well building this and it's thirty five, thirty nine million dollars. We get two or three million dollars for the Paparoa County Council Yard. And there's lots of other bits of dirt lying around that we can get rid of, but we seem to be hell bent on hanging on to them. Um, another thing would be that Quayf Road land. How much, how much land does this community board want? Like, here's, I think, from what I understand, the Quayf Road land will be about two million, three million bucks. Chuck that back into the pot, it helps us throw money at this, like, we can't keep everything and keep buying everything, I I agree with the other guys. But we've got surplus stuff lying around all over the place, get rid of it and then there will help for this.
Aaron?
Um, I'm quite stuck on this one because uh I don't disagree with the design. Um, I like where the design's gone, um, as far as I'm aware, it would be the only facility in Christchurch with every single pool being fully accessible. Which is a good way to lead going forward, um, and I I share quite a big boundary border, ward boundary with Jimmy Chen. Um, and so support him as my fellow councillor. Uh, but I also agree with the us being fiscally responsible with this amount of money. And I do, and I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I can't wait for them to come back and no doubt they won't come back before we've finished signing off all the pools. About how many pools Christchurch has per capita and per person? And the problem with any swimming equation or any entertainment entity, uh, no matter what it is. Is that the more you build, you just dilute a particular market, you do grow it partially because of excess fire in area. But you do dilute how many people do swim or read or or game or or do whatever. You can, there is a limit, and once you reach that limit, then the cost per swim or the cost per book or the cost per whatever. Um, starts getting really, really expensive because you're spreading it over more and more and more facilities. So I am looking forward to that, um, I respect the views of those that have come in from Hornby, the Hornby henchmen. I think we should probably call you for your persuasive techniques of getting people over the line. Um, so for that, on this particular item, um, for the first time this term, I'm going to abstain, I'm not going to vote against it nor for it.
Well, I'm just going to say a few words, so, um, I know that we are facing challenging times and we are. Uh, however, this this particular centre is different uh for a range of reasons. Uh, not least of which the amount of time that it took to select the right site for it. So the site selection went through an extensive process. The original desire to build it on Denton Park was rejected by the community and we listened to them. Uh, should they be punished by not being in the ground, because they would be in the ground by now. Simply because, um, we listened to their plea not to build on Denton Park. And to and to pull it into Kyle Park, uh, which actually is an incredibly positive use of that. And actually enables us to essentially cover up what was there before. Um, and in relation to putting large, um, facilities on the top of landfills, we've seen that in. And pack and save and the Purwood Port and other places where where where, um, land has been been able to be reutilised in that way. Um, this facility serves a very, um, a particular community. So when I went out to the community meeting, uh, and I've been to more than one out in Hornby in regard to this matter. Uh, and and I listened to those that have great difficulty, um, especially those that are still in recovery from significant. Uh, um, medical and, uh, you know, accidents and and various other events. Uh, where there are constraints on them getting the support they need to go to a a a pool for their exercise, which is part of their rehabilitation. Um, because they can't get there, um, the money runs out for the additional support that they get for a period of time. And then they simply can't get, uh, I do think that we do need to have these facilities in communities. Um, I particularly wanted this one to be close to where the children are. The children, uh, won't necessarily be able to get into town to utilise the Metro Sports Facility. There were a range of decisions that were made about the the blueprint that the community didn't have any engagement over. This one's been thoroughly engaged and I really do want to see it proceed. So even though we're talking about the concept design today, uh, I think the concept design is worthy of our support, so I would like to support it.
James, did you?
Kiara, um, look, at the beginning of today's meeting, I thought I was firm in my support for this, um, for this take or this co-papo project. Um, and then I've had cause to to think through the financial, um, issues that have been raised. However, I think that this is, we're at an early stage for for one thing, but, um, I think we've got to. Put a line in the sand and say that we are supporting our wider community. I accept that we may have to, the the financial, um, uh, issues are valid. And I think somewhere along the line, we're going to have to cut our cloth differently to how we've got it right here, right now. And some of that cloth that will discard may be things that I feel really strongly about. So, um, at this point in time, I'm going to support this motion.
All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
So that's, um, Sam and James. And and one abstention from Aaron. Thank you very much. So that's carried, I guess, um, so that's eleven fifty seven, so, um, we might as well, uh. Well, it is suggested that we we just quickly do as many of these three papers that we quickly can. Twenty, what?
Twenty three, twenty four, twenty five.
What about twenty, oh, twenty two's at one, so twenty three, the draft community housing strategy is, um. You've got questions on that, well, hang on a minute. Delegations for Christchurch Cathedral reinstatement, I'm I'm happy to move the recommendations, seconded by Andrew, is there any discussion? I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. The opportunity to revoke redundant external policies, happy to move, Sam McDonald, seconded Aaron, Aaron Kewen. I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Have we got time to do the draft community housing strategy? Can you give us an extra five minutes? We've done all the minutes? Yeah, so, okay, housing strategy. If we just go a little bit over time, that's okay. Because I think the people that were not going to be here aren't here already, so. Do you want to take it as read and go straight to questions? Yep, Sam?
Yeah, thank you, um, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find the page, I'm just trying to understand the financial implication of this, so we've we've talked about, I'll bring it up. So further, so for five point nineteen, further stock that is anticipated to be due for upgrading during the next L T P is four hundred and eighty two units, the cost of fourteen point three million. Can you just talk me through, I mean, the the whole housing stock is in theory rates neutral, isn't it? But can you just talk through the financial implications of that? I mean, what does that actually mean, that fourteen point three million?
Sure, so, um, this relates to the, um, housing funds that currently operates as it receives monies back from the trust through the leasing. So at the moment, this is a budget for the ongoing repair and maintenance of those those units over about the next ten years or so. So that's essentially all that the fund allows for at this point in time. So after that, then the fund starts to build up through the dividend, through the lease to replace some existing stock. So we've noted there that this is pending the further scoping of works.
Okay.
So that's our property guy, uh, folks' best estimate at this point.
So when we talk about it being rates neutral, is there a like a use of money or a use of capital, uh, portion that's that comes back to council? Based on the the value of all the homes we have? Or is that, is that, I mean, because there is an interest cost to the, I guess, the wider borrowing that we have, is there a portion that comes back to council?
Um, if I'm just trying to unpick your question, um, a little bit.
Yeah.
So a- as you'll be aware, in terms of the lease that we that we do to the trust.
Yeah.
So as it stands at the moment, there has been some recent discussion on this, of course, so the trust carries out the minor maintenance. And then we get a dividend back for the, um, um, major maintenance and the ultimate replacement of stock. So yes, at that level, the, um, our social housing is rates neutral in terms of the way the fund operates.
I'm just trying to pick up, I guess, though, that like the, I guess, the opportunity cost of having council equity tied up in these properties. Is there a, um, and we talk about being rates neutral, it technically isn't rates neutral, is it? Because we could be using that money somewhere else? Or or is there a charge that goes back to the wider rates pool or the wider council to be used in other parts for the use of those homes?
No, there's not a charge that goes back, if anything, our stock is a rate payer. That money that does come back to council, if you think of it like that. So I think your question may be, um, through you, Ms. Mayor, a wider question around the opportunity cost in terms of the equity and the value of a portfolio, if I'm if I'm understanding the question correctly.
I I I understand the question, but it's not, um, I mean, it it's a it's a technical question rather than a.
Well, I'm just trying to understand if it, if we're in fact rates neutral or not, so.
Well, yeah. No, 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 it's not, it is, it is worth, um, having that conversation. I mean, this is a proposal to put a draft out for public consultation.
Hmm.
Um, that that is an issue that has been raised before. Um, and of course, the the history of of the the original housing stock was, of course, extremely, uh, low interest. Um, government loans, um, dating back into the the very early days. Uh, and so it wasn't, um, you, yeah, the 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 input into the, um, into the stock wasn't. Wasn't quite the normal capital investment that, um, that leads to a simple answer to your question, it's not a simple one for questions to answer.
And I'll just have one more, if that's okay, and then.
Yeah.
So just, the one thing I couldn't see in here was, um, and maybe I've missed it, was our need to fix the problem between the ownership between the housing trust and us. Is that something that should be in here in terms of, I mean, I know we've talked about it, the need to get them off everything off our books and into the housing trust. There's there's nothing in here, we're not going out to to talk about the need to transfer it over.
We we've already consulted on that, if we were in a position to do that, we would do that.
But I'm just saying, why aren't we considering it now, again?
Because we i- i- if if the law allowed us to do that, where we could protect our financial interest in the in the housing stock, then we would, um. We would, we have, we have already consulted on it and consultation wouldn't be required before we made the transfer.
Yeah, so I'm trying to say why we aren't looking to explore that with central government, because there could be a solution. because there could be a solution.
Yes, we are looking to explore it, but at the moment it's because OCHT is a, it's a community housing provider and under the trust law, the properties, if the trust were to fail, the property has to be transferred to another agency. That's the only thing that's standing in the way. We do not need to consult on that because we have the power to do it if we want to. But the law hasn't changed. Yep, yep.
Can OCHT not be doing this at all? It can't, is it what you just said?
No, no, that...
Are we doubling up here?
My preference would be to transfer all of the properties to OCHT.
And that wouldn't need this to be done?
And that's what we, no, 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 no. We've been through this so many times.
But there's a lot of time and effort been going on by these guys to do this. Why don't you just throw it all at OCHT and say, do it all yourself?
This is broader. Sorry, this is broader than, it's a broader strategy and it is to engage the public in a wider conversation about investing in community housing. And the language has been very deliberately changed from social housing to community housing, to talk more expressively about the range of housing that's both affordable and rental, you know, so it's on both sides of it.
So it's model agnostic. It doesn't prevent what yourself, Phil and Sam have indicated. It actually enables it if the council wishes to do so and if the law would allow it. This is your housing strategy. Think about it like that.
And we've also got CCHL looking at options as well, Sam, so as you know. So, you know, and the reason we've got a range of options being looked at is to actually resolve this side of it, which is to ensure that the focus, and this is the OCHT side of it. OCHT has, you know, they have a fully wraparound but a wider extent of links into, you know, job connections and various other things, which is actually looking at people's whole lives rather than just the renting side of their life. But Pauline, you want to move it?
I'll second.
And seconded by Andrew. Is there any wider debate? I'll put...
I mean, should Phil and I participate in this or not? Does it matter that we're on the housing trust?
No. So I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried.
And thank Paul for the amazing work you've done on this too.
Report Sam against.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
We commence the meeting with the item 22, draft amendments to the Christchurch Central Recovery Plan. Staff have got one slide that they'd like to show us and then I know James Gough has got some questions and then we'll just see if there's any other final questions before we move on. Right.
Okay. I'll start.
The mayor did indicate.
I did say.
She did say.
I'm sorry, okay. Good afternoon. So the purpose of this report is to seek approval to go to the next step of the Greater Christchurch Regeneration Act process. Now, we've put a slide up there just to give you an indication of where we are at in this process. The purpose of these amendments, as we state in the report, are to more effectively achieve the regeneration outcomes of the Christchurch Central Recovery Plan and those that we seek from the Canterbury multi-use arena. By making these changes, we believe we will provide greater certainty for residents, business owners, investors, and also for the operators of the CMUA. In developing the proposed amendments that we have before you today, and as you can see from the attachments in the report, we have engaged with a number of people to arrive at where we are at this point in time. This includes our acoustic advisers, Marshall Day. We have undertaken some public consultation engagement. We've sought preliminary views from strategic partners. We've engaged with V-Bass as the operator and through them we have also sought feedback from concert organisers. And we've also, as you can see, considered the rules of venues in other parts of both the city and the country. The next steps are to seek comments from our partners and then to publicly notify. There'll be, from there, we'll consider the feedback and we'll further finalise the amendments before we come back to you. Today is not the final decision, we're just starting this process as you can see in front of you. We believe through the engagement that we've undertaken, and that the rules that we've developed are a good evidence base, have a good evidence base beneath them to start this process of engagement. So that's really what we're at. Any questions? James?
Yeah, thanks. I know we've taken some of it offline and I appreciate your time beforehand on this, but just a few more for me that have come out of this. First one, would the proposed restrictions on the noise apply for sports and other events or is it only concerts? Sorry, some of these are just clarifications, just quite simple ones.
Yep, so these are only for concerts and they're only for concerts above 90 decibels. So they're only for the real large concerts. There's smaller concerts that are quieter.
So no limit for an All Blacks test, for example?
No.
Cheer as much as you want?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. The other one, the proposed annual 15 concert limit, and I think you might have almost answered that just before, but just to clarify again, that's purely for concerts, not for All Blacks tests and everything?
Absolutely, and once you're in those large concerts.
Like, you know, or even, you know, with how things have changed, you know, like e-games or something like that, it's just concerts.
Just concerts, yeah.
Okay, that's great. The other one, has the 85, sorry, is it 80 or 85? I've got two, I think it's actually 80 decibels, isn't it? Oh, has the, oh no, I see what I'm looking at, I'm getting it confused because it was 85 was the decibel limit for the temporary stadium, that's correct, isn't it, and this is proposing 80?
Yeah.
Okay, well that ties in too, then has, as far as history goes, since we've had the temporary stadium, has that 85 decibel limit been challenged and why would we propose a lower decibel limit for a purpose-built, final, closed-roofed, designated, multi-use arena that's lower than what the temporary stadium was?
Yeah, so the temporary stadium is, was obviously just a short, well, it's supposed to be just a short-term stadium. It's also a lot more of an open-air stadium, whilst this one won't be fully enclosed because the roof doesn't, won't completely block out noise. The temporary stadium could, you know, noise could travel further. So it was a slightly different situation with the temporary stadium. It was much harder to mitigate the noise there. And there was recognition at the time that it was for a short period of time, it was just to obviously get the...
The temporary nature.
The facility open, whereas this facility is a permanent, long-term facility, so it's a slightly different context.
Okay, I guess, how do you sort of defend when looking at some of the other noise limits, where you've got Victoria Street, you know, I think it's 85 decibel limit at, say, 7am, being higher than what the designated stadium is?
Yeah.
A higher threshold?
Yeah, so within the stadium, the advice we've had is that to meet that, so that 80 limit is, will be measured at monitoring points around the stadium. Actually, within the arena, you can have up to 105 decibels, so it's going to be a lot louder than what you see in other venues.
Okay, now that's helpful. And the last one, is, do you think there would be any merit on consulting on a handful of curfew extensions, essentially giving the operator the ability to pull the trigger if they exercise a best judgement call? I hope this would never happen, but, you know, as I'm, again, talked about it offline, if we were lucky enough to secure someone like Elton John, who's enjoying this, thinks Christchurch and the arena is the best thing since sliced bread, they're encouraged by doing encores, it's 10 to 11, whoever decided to pull the plug there would have to be shot, surely, if they pulled, turned the power off at 11pm? Is, so we don't get in hot water as in our ability to be able to exercise a couple of those leave passes, for lack of a better word. We say, we've made a call and we will go past that time, but there was good reason to, so we've elected to use this exemption on this instance?
Yeah, I think that's probably something that the operator of the venue would need to consider, I'm not sure a district plan would be the vehicle to do that. The other option is to think about a slightly later finishing time, perhaps, but yeah, that would be another option.
Is there any precedence, and it's kind of a follow-on from that to a certain, it's not actually, it's a final, final, but absolute last one then, is there any precedence or merit in even splitting some hours where perhaps in summer months you could go a bit later, which traditionally people might, you know, it's light if it's longer?
Yeah, so you'll see that in Dunedin during, I think it's, it's during summer months, that they do finish later, so they have a later closing time, or finish time, it goes to midnight, and so there are merits there. There's, my understanding is the reasonings behind that was to do with lighting and the level of darkness, if you like, for shows that start at 10 or that sort of time, that are also incorporating some form of lighting display or show with what's going on within. So, and obviously being further south, it gets darker later in Dunedin. So yes, there is some merits, particularly with that type of roof structure, which is obviously transparent of a later time in summer. So if you're wanting to, if council was wanting to change that at this point, we could do that and mirror, I guess, what they have in Dunedin for the summer months.
Well, competitive advantage, better than what everyone else has got. But I think that's been really helpful, so thank you.
Aaron?
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions. One is around the decibel limit outside the stadium. What did you say it was? 85?
80.
80. Yet cars can drive past legally at 90 and 95 if your car's registered prior to 2008?
Hopefully not continuously.
Oh, it's Christchurch? But yeah, so I'm just, because there's been a lot of discussion in the public around noise limits at a concert?
Yes.
And then you would have seen probably some of the comments and then my next question. So that can apply, and then my other one is around the limit on days that you, that we're saying 15?
Yes.
Yet if we had a really successful opening and could bring in one of the best artists in the world, you could have multiple nights when you first open and then you're limited for the rest of the year.
Yes.
People are asking why 15, why not potentially as many as you need can sell out, can book?
Yep, so that's, as I said in my opening statements, having a limit provides that level of certainty and tries to provide the balance between the regeneration outcomes being sought and the level of disturbance in the, for other people in the community. So it's a balancing act, and as I also stated, this is not the final position.
Right.
So absolutely, and we've seen in some of the feedback we've had through the earlier stages, particularly a number of views were to have a higher number or indeed no limit, and others were obviously a lower number. So what we're doing here is we're entering into a process to get that sort of feedback and take that into consideration.
And for major events, what would happen if, like, because we wouldn't bid now, but if we were to go for something, an event like World Expo, and you'd need to do possibly 100 nights in your six months that the expo's open, what would, what would you do? Would you just go for 15?
Not major events.
They're not concerts.
Oh, well, no, at World Expo, they had, I'm not Elton John, they had, like John Farnham and that kind of thing, we're all playing there, I'd call that relatively major, like, you wouldn't put them in a paddock, you'd go for your main venue to guarantee the, I'm just throwing up scenarios that could happen, not saying that we would bid now, because 15 wouldn't make a successful expo.
So there is an ability, you know, this doesn't have to be set in stone forever and never changed, there is other processes, and that's how a lot of stadiums operate, they go through maybe a consenting process or could vary the desert nation to, if we saw that there was a big event coming up, we could change these rules. At the moment, based on the advice that we've received, and we've got V-Bass here as well, that 15 is a reasonable number in terms of what is likely to have, in fact, it's far more than what has previously come across.
So if we were to be lucky enough to secure one of those major events that lasted along and you needed lots of nights, we could go for a change?
Yes.
You do have plenty of lead-in time.
Yeah, you'd obviously have to go through a public consultation process like we're doing now, again, and so it would depend on the outcome of that, but yeah, this doesn't have to be set in stone forever in a day.
And then finally, the last one was followed on from one of James, is around that finishing time of 11. What, say, due to unforeseen circumstances, something else has happened in the evening that could be the fault of the promoter or not, or the act or whoever, that delays the evening, do they have to cut their set short or will there be an exemption when it's not their fault or their fault? But the ticket payer, it's definitely not their fault?
No, it's not the ticket payer's fault. We're talking about rules that go into the district plan.
Yep.
You're talking about an enforcement process, so I guess that the outcome of running over what's in the district plan would be, need to be considered through the enforcement process.
So the enforcement is, if they, like, say, whatever happens, they've had to go 30 minutes over on a particular event, does the one guy from Armagh Guard turn up and ask him to turn it down, he'll be back in 30 minutes, I'll take my time?
Um...
I mean, because that's simple then, because you...
I might, I might ask, V-Bass, do you have a comment on that or?
Or is it just a, like, just a standard fine, it's not that fair?
Well, we're the enforcement.
Caroline, would you like to come forward?
I mean, that's, that's, it's really a practical...
These scenarios, we've been having concerts in Christchurch for a long, long time, I've been involved with most of them, and these issues have come up, but they've always been reasonable. And so it's never gone to that extent. And when you're looking at Lancaster Park, which was open right next to residential, that was always managed extremely well by both council and the promoters, et cetera, so, and yeah, and that's that link between council and the local community, well, it's true, it's, so, you know, the scenarios that we're talking about, it might happen, but, and there have been, a couple of have actually gone over the noise, et cetera, but it's always been managed well and it hasn't been going for a long time, it didn't go over for a long time, because part of the strategy is to, you don't want the concerts going too late, because you do want those punters to go into town and spread the love.
That's right. That was always the intention. Caroline, do you want to comment on that?
I think any, any time that you can foresee a concert going beyond that 11pm, say, you would ask for an exemption prior. I obviously can't comment on the enforcement, I haven't been in that situation, but I think an unforeseen circumstance would be one, and I think common sense would have to prevail in that you would just manage that at the time. And I would, I think it would be in a nightly situation, then enforcement would apply in an unforeseen circumstance. But I think you're right, anything where there's any risk, residential, you know, key stakeholder engagement is really, really critical to all of that.
Yeah, the paper refers to the operator engaging with the community ahead of any of these major concerts, so you would anticipate that to be a core feature of your role?
Yeah, and we certainly do that now, and particularly when it comes to big concerts and we're thinking traffic management plans and noise, it's always about engagement with the local residents and the local community.
And since you're here, do you want to talk about the number of concerts? Because I think I read somewhere in the paper that this was a restriction, this is over one a month, it's an ambitious expectation for me, but can you comment on that?
To give it a bit of context, you know, these are 15 big noisy concerts, you know, so we're not talking Super Rugby, Maida 10 Rugby, All Blacks, Nitro Circus, Cirque du Soleil, you know, all of those other events that you can imagine filling the calendar. So another 15 quite big noisy events is actually, it's actually quite an ambitious target, great to have. And just probably another bit of context, so you think Spark Arena in Auckland, they do 10 to 15 full mode shows a year, that's 10 to 15,000 people, and in broader Auckland, there's about six or seven on average annually in the big open air. And in broader Auckland, there's about six or seven on average annually in the big open air stadiums. So, you know, it's pretty rare that a promoter would bypass Auckland. And so for us to have an additional fifteen big shows is actually, it's pretty good. And Forbar in Dunedin, they do four on average per annum. So, it gives a bit of context to kind of that number, because, yeah, it does, when you think about it as fifteen, especially if you think you get four Ed Sheerans or three Adele's, you know. But to actually look at that broader context, it does bring it into the perspective a little.
Yanni, same?
Yeah, thanks. I think I read somewhere in here, this is the most permissive noise restrictions out of any stadium in New Zealand.
Yeah, about North Harbour, but North Harbour is an industrial area.
Just wanted to check, in the public interest section under section thirty-eight-two, it talks about the different people that will be impacted. But the one group that seems to be missing, which I know we've raised repeatedly through this process, is the other venue operators in close proximity. So, I just don't see any consideration of how that will work. And I guess, I just remember getting complaints previously when we've had something happening and the impact on shows at the Theatre Royal, for example, or maybe at the new town, or the repaired town hall. So, yeah, are you able just to give us some degree of comfort around how that conflict can be managed through what's been proposed?
Sure. I've asked that specific question of our acoustic experts in terms of the impact of noise on the likes of Theatre Royal or the Town Hall or other venues, and also in particular bass noise as well, because that can often can be a problem. I'm assured that the noise levels that we've suggested in this report, and both the distance and the screening, the results from other buildings mitigates that issue, so it is not an issue. And then there was also, I was advised that the likes of the Theatre Royal and the Town Hall are built and designed specifically to keep noise out. So, that's part of the detail of the construction is to, because you've got roads outside and all of those other things. So, that is not an issue. So, I've asked that specific question, I've been reassured that that would not be an issue.
I was actually involved with one of the shows that was affected through Showbiz, and our specialist soloists from overseas could actually pick up a slight doof, doof, doof from the, but keeping in mind that that event was just at the end of the road, on a, just a paddock, basically. This is a. This is Uber bringing the food. So, you know, there's always a concern, but there is a difference, the complaints that we were dealing with at that time was a doof, doof, doof in a paddock just down the road. This is a purpose-built stadium, so, you know, there is a slight difference.
Very lightweight roof, that will not keep sound.
But part of that, the issue at the Theatre Royal was the actual ground vibe, you know, it was actually coming through, so.
Okay, the other question I had was in regards to the economic cost on the existing residential. I was just trying to get my head around that. In the report, it talks a lot about, most of the buildings in the area, I think, that have been new built since the earthquake have pretty solid cladding that will mitigate some of the noise.
There's noise insulation requirements.
But there's areas that we haven't had that requirement on that we're now going to include. And just knowing some of the topology, I guess, some of the, you know, dense townhouses that have been built wouldn't appear to have very high levels of existing insulation. But is that, is that something that we should be concerned about? And the cost that's associated, I think it's about twenty-two thousand dollars, between seven and twenty-two thousand dollars. Do we know kind of roughly how many properties will have an increased cost if they need to retrofit? And is any budget provisional liability on us around that?
So, the thing to make clear, this does not require anyone to retrofit their buildings. This only applies to new buildings that are built within that area. So, this, these costs, I mean, as you say, a lot of the areas already require insulation anyway. There's already, with the building code, there's already requirements for thermal insulation as well, which also deals with the noise. So, that's your additional cost from what we've advised is not going to be that significant because of all the other requirements, they have to meet healthy homes and that kind of thing, too, at the moment anyway. So, this is just for new builds, not for.
We constantly hear from developers that it's too hard to build in the central city, and that's why we've got the DC rebate, and that would seem to be about the same quantum that they may have to spend on the noise mitigation.
Well, there have been noise.
Noise mitigation provisions are already in place.
Yeah, exactly.
They came in on twenty-fourteen after the.
No, 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 there's a whole new area that's being classified.
Yes, I have read the report, thank you, Yanni, that's very helpful. But in terms of the ones that have been built, and that area have been built to the new standard.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, are there any more questions? Have I got someone to move the, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Sorry, may I just, did you want to change the summer time? The eleven o'clock to midnight in the summer months, or did you not?
Can you just explain to me, sorry, really clearly, just once more, how easy it is to get an exemption? So, if we have that limit at eleven, and for argument's sake, Elton John is in town, like James said, and they want to go to twelve, how difficult is it to get that?
So, if we know beforehand, then there would be a, we'd have to go through a consenting process to do that.
Bruce Springsteen played over the limit for that. Did you get a warning or did you get a breached resource consent thing and a fine imposed on you?
I don't believe we had a fine, I think, and it was obviously before my time, unfortunately. But as far as I understand, we can get exemptions with relative ease if we do consult with residents.
He just refused to leave the stage, I wasn't there.
We've come a fad model, Tim knows.
But that is the real question, is, I mean, if we were to change it to midnight over the summer or whatever.
I wouldn't want them all to be midnight, the whole point of this is to allow the central city businesses.
Once I'm agreeing with you, once I'm agreeing with you.
I think that's something that we can work on.
Yeah, so, but can we be clear that the council wouldn't be a barrier to exemptions?
Well, it could be.
Well, I mean, you'd deal with that as you would normally would, I think.
Bruce might be able to help us with the legal thing. Are we able to allow some, a degree of flexibility for exemptions?
I can't say what the answer will be on a resource consent application, but as you've said, it would require an application for a resource consent to do something that the plan doesn't allow. We're talking about a permitted activity standard in the plan, a permitted activity standard. Ninety-nine percent of resource consent applications are granted on a non-modified basis. I don't know whether that gives any indication of what merits would be of this one, but that does happen.
So, it shouldn't be a high barrier.
And I think it's a relative exception rather than the rule. You know, I think eleven o'clock is actually relatively reasonable. I wouldn't have thought it was something that would happen all of the time.
And keeping in mind that, you know, we have a very good relationship with the three main promoters, Jeff Jones, Paul Dainty and Michael Densky, who have been the ones that have brought concerts here for the last ten years. No one else has, but we have a really good relationship with Vbase and them. And so any kind of, there's a lot of forewarning, there's a lot of planning. So, any kind of ideas of going over would be dealt with well and truly leading into it. Because remember, the promoters want to leave with everyone smiling, because it helps the next time, but it also helps, they realise that they want the venue to be doing really well as well.
I mean, is it possible then to have a, not permitted, but the next least restrictive for an additional half hour or something during certain months?
Well, we could change the time. I don't know whether we could. I think perhaps we're worrying about something that's probably not a.
Not an issue.
Yeah, I think we're trying to find a problem, a solution for a problem that doesn't really exist.
It's never been an issue in thirty years.
I don't recall it being an issue with Bruce Springsteen going over time.
Yeah.
All right, okay, so do I have somebody who's prepared to move this and second it? And Aaron Keown, Sam McDonald, any debate? Yanni?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think people concerned that this is somehow restrictive, this is one of the most permissive planning regimes for noise. I just would like to remind councillors of what happened at Rurupuna, where we actually had to go and buy properties out with considerable expense. So, I think there could be an issue around this. But this is going out for public feedback, and I think it's really important that we do put it out and get that community input. I think one of the real concerns, though, hopefully when we do the lessons learned, is the fact that we've got a planning regime that's been put in place after decisions have been made about certain anchor projects. And it just seems crazy that a number of the places that are going to be captured in the extension of the rules around noise mitigation are ones that have been built after the earthquake. And, you know, it just seems crazy that we're going to, we didn't actually put the planning rules in at the same time that the Central City Plan was announced in regards to the stadium around noise. So, appreciate there's a little work going on to understand the impacts of this. But I think it is kind of a bit of a lost opportunity, the fact that we've got so many new builds. I think in here it says sixty percent of dwellings that have been built post-earthquake in that zone. So, anyway, let's hope that this works, and let's hope that we get good public feedback around the impact. I still have some real concerns about those other groups in the area. I mean, we've heard that they're not going to be impacted, but, you know, it is quite hard to understand with a noisy loud bass. And I would have thought possibly something around scheduling that would put some sort of onus on the operator to not conflict events would be quite useful. But we'll even see what people have to say as we go through the submission process. Thank you.
Aaron, oh, sorry, I'll get you to close the debate, Aaron, as the mover of the motion. James?
Yeah, just pretty briefly on this. Look, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of people really do want a permissive approach with this, about the stadium or multi-use arena having a competitive advantage. And everyone wants to see it flourish, everyone wants to ensure that this is most certainly the antithesis of a white elephant, all the way through the, from the general community to the staff and councillors themselves. So, the important thing to remember here is this is getting robust feedback, hand in glove with the community. Because what's really critical is that we front-foot this and that there's things in place that are permissive enough to ensure that the arena flourishes, but not so permissive with if you have absolutely nothing, that if an inevitable complaint comes, that because you have nothing, something is then imposed on you, which will ensure that the arena can't flourish. So, I would rather be in the driver's seat all day long with something that can work and that we know will work. And just finally, I'll finish on the curfew, you know, this is really good. The most, the critical element of the Canterbury multi-use arena is it's an anchor project that is being built with the intent to complement a city. The last thing we want is for the cities to be cannibalised by it. So, people that want to have a good time in the city, that have got money to spend and want to enjoy themselves, can actually have an ability to do that. And current business owners or even potentially future business owners should be really excited about having twenty to thirty thousand people on their doorstep that want to enjoy all that Christchurch Central City has to offer. So, complementing the city is the rationale around a curfew, and it's a permissive curfew, that's what, a permissive curfew is being proposed as it is, but that's actually a key element of it.
Aaron?
Yeah, just raise a couple of quick points. One is around a number that Yanni raised, those new builds in the area. A lot of people have bought knowing the stadium was going there. Some will move out of their own place because they can rent it for a premium when the concert's on. So, that's a positive to them. And then all the ones that stay there, their cousins of staff are coming to stay. You're going to have people all over your flat or your house or your apartment because you live next door to a stadium. I mean, it swings and roundabouts. And the other one is, hopefully if the media pick up on this story, which there's not a lot of negatives, so they might not, but if they do, they might go with a positive aspect is that, and it was on Yanni's point of how permissive it is, that if we have the problem of being full fifteen nights a year, we are very successful. So, let's aim for some success in the city.
Good, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no. That's carried, thank you, thanks very much, thanks. And the last item for us to deal with in the open agenda is item thirty-nine, Otatahi Christchurch Recovery Plan. Right, so, sorry, I didn't, Dawn, I didn't talk to you beforehand. Are you going to present this or just take it as read and ask questions? So, you're going to make an opening statement?
Just to know.
Yes, okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members. You have been briefed on the Otatahi Christchurch Recovery Plan in these two sessions, if not three, actually, if I'm thinking about it. So, I'm really delighted to be here today with the wider team. So, every time you see us, there's a few more coming into the fold, which is really, really good to be here. But this builds on the back of the mayor's paper of the twenty-fifth of June. And we absolutely, as the collective team, and you all know, Joanna, Paul and Ivan, are here to present this report and answer any questions. But I want to just recognise who we have with us behind as well, because we have Diane McDermott, who is the permanent, now the Permanent Regional Commissioner for MSD, so she's just recently appointed then, isn't it? Yvonne Currie, I'm sure you all know Yvonne as a General Manager for Population and Public Health at the CDHB, and of course, Leanne Watson, our Chief Exec from the Canterbury Chamber of Commerce. We're here to basically get agreement that it is our elected members who are providing the cohesive leadership and overarching governance in partnership with Mano Fenowa for our citywide recovery and repositioning efforts. And that's what this report is fundamentally about. And we recognise that historically and in the initial period, we've been concentrating on the economic piece, but this fundamentally brings forward the social underpinning that must work with it. So, we are also seeking your approval of the scope for the plan, approval for agreeing the monitoring framework as outlined in the paper, knowing that that will adapt over time as we get more sophisticated in our monitoring and our ability to be able to count things that matter, and for agreement for that particular monitoring framework. And we will bring forward a quarterly dashboard on that basis. It's not as if we haven't been doing things, but this formalises it and puts it in a way that you can see on a regular basis and will enable us to speak to the wider city and to our partners. Any questions you may have, the far more intelligent people on my right will be answering them.
Right, Tim and then Jimmy?
I met with Ivan just to go over a couple of things the other day, so thank you very much for your time, Ivan, I really appreciate that. I think this is a great bit of work, I really appreciate the work it's done. So, has anyone moved or seconded it?
You can move it.
I'm quite happy to move it, thank you.
And Sarah would like to second it, so Jimmy, question?
On page eight, particularly regarding to the action plan. Last Monday, I chaired the multicultural committee meeting. And a moment under the inform group, they have a subgroup, a particular emphasised the multicultural community, you know, and the kind of the. multicultural community, you know, and the kind of the, how to improve their improvement. And also through those training, et cetera. But their group invited quite a few of the Gamma Agency and also the NGO, et cetera. But they particular emphasised, they invited the, because this one is a little bit close with the labour market transition, that's a criteria NZ, you know, you take a lead. But you know, representatives get in their group. Actually, I'm particularly concerned, we are discussing all the committee councillors. There's the resources overlap, clash, you know, how to working together. And also those the group, inform group, they've been established almost thirty years. So I just want to recommend, whether the criteria NZ can take a positive way, also engage with the subgroup of inform, inform group.
Yes.
Look, I think that's an excellent suggestion. We certainly do interact with a number of community groups that support ethnic communities, as does MSD and Diane's teamwork, particularly closely with those groups, to ensure that we are transitioning people into the workforce where possible and making sure they have access to all of the trading opportunities to support that.
Thank you. Sam?
Yeah, thanks, your team have pulled this together. And I always raise this, Joe, and it's something I struggle with, is how are we gonna measure the tangible outcomes from this? So can you give me a sense of how that is? And then maybe for you, Dawn, obviously the council plays a role in terms of the billion dollars we have a year that we, well, seven fifty that we spend in the city. So where on here does that sit in terms of how we're gonna effectively deliver it to the city? So can you guys give me a feel for that?
Yeah, so in terms of the monitoring framework, as the paper outlines, we'll be reporting quarterly against the metrics that are within both the economic indicators and social indicators. You'll have a very clear idea of how we're benchmarking against the rest of the country, the national average and other metropolitan centres. We will also be publishing that data monthly so that we have an idea with, between the quarters, how we're progressing, because it's really important that we're able to respond quickly. And then at a project level, we'll be reporting against projects that are within the seven streams from within our organisations. So for instance, Christchurch NZ reports quarterly against all of our project activity, and we'll continue to do that. Now, the difference that this plan delivers is that all of that project activity will be organised against the priorities of the recovery plan. So you can see how it fits into that overall context. So both at a program level and a project level, you'll be able to have visibility over our success or otherwise in terms of responding to recovery.
So a year on from now, what will the, maybe I've missed it, but what are the tangible things we can sit here and say, actually, Christchurch NZ or the team have delivered? So that's the bit I'm sort of missing.
Yeah, so in terms of our performance against the indicators, it's our ambition that we outperform the national average, that our recovery is faster and more detailed than is occurring at a national level. But Sam, it's really difficult at this point in time, because of the dynamic situation with respect to COVID, to put a measure, an actual number in this, because the situation's continuing to change with respect to the economy. But it is our ambition that we outperform the national average.
So is this more of a monitoring approach than a delivery approach?
No, it very much focused on action and delivery and ensuring that we are outperforming national performance.
So how do we deliver it if we don't know what our goal is?
Well, our goal is to outperform the national average, and we will know that on a monthly basis.
But we don't.
So if you, if you, three point, three point two one actually lists the work stream. So in answer to the specific question you asked of me and the very significant spend that this council puts into the market, that would fall under the productive infrastructure, which would be ourselves and Christchurch NZ. Now, you, I'm sure, are very aware that we have a comprehensive procurement strategy that fundamentally links to outcomes. And we've been working on that and adopted it in this last year. And we're actually working about how we can make that even stronger. So that would relate to employability, it would relate to sustainability, it would relate, obviously, to best value. It relates to where we get within our own purchasing within our own area. So within Christchurch and then wider Christchurch and then New Zealand and outside of that. So we have a number of levers that we can utilise, and we will be able to show that in our numbers in this work.
This is a recovery strategy for Otatahi Christchurch. It's not for Christchurch City Council activities or Christchurch NZ activities. And I think that's the key, are the partnerships and relationships with MSD and with health and the DHB. And, you know, it's all of those different aspects. So we've got a number of other people lined up here for that purpose, to sort of indicate that level of and extent of partnership, which is why the chamber is such a core, critical one in terms of the business-led recovery in the city. So it's not the council doing or Christchurch NZ doing. It's actually how do you, how do you generate the action so that it is done?
So are we not, so are we not doing? Is it what? Well, you just said we're not doing.
Yes and no, it's, yes and no. There are activities that we will coordinate and bring together as a city. You know, I'm sick to death of talking about bloody silos in this council, let alone the silos that exist between different agencies. If we are to actually have a sort of deep and quick recovery, then we do actually have to work in a collaborative mindset and not within the individual silos of our organisations. But, yeah.
If I can answer, I really understand what you're getting at, Sam. And I absolutely agree with you that we need to be measuring progress. The, to clarify the point around the performance against national average, we don't know what the national average will be at any given time, which is why we've developed the monitoring framework and a commitment to monitor monthly and report quarterly. But your question around action is really important. And what this delivers is a guide for action. There'll be action that my organisation will deliver within that, that Paul's, that the Christchurch City Council through Dawn and the rest of the team will deliver. There will also be action that Diane and Yvonne and Leanne's teams will be delivering within this guide to action. So you're absolutely right, this is about action and not just about monitoring. And there is action sitting within all of our responsibilities.
Yeah, I think, Sam, if you think about, just take an example of something that's in the appendix, I think, to the paper is around the work that the airport led with Ministry of Transport around the freight hub. And so that was tangible action, that the airport put their hand up, went to the Ministry of Transport and worked out how to get the freight activity in and out of the South Island that we needed to start recovering quickly. So that was entirely consistent with some of the indicators that you'll see here in terms of business or economic activity that effectively are facilitated by and enabled by the work that, in this case, the Ministry of Transport and Christchurch Airport did. In other areas, there's going to be other agencies and other organisations that need to be involved in facilitating and enabling positive performance against the indicators that are set out in the monitoring framework. So it's an enabling and facilitating approach to deliver positive outcomes when you start monitoring how we're performing relative to other cities. If that, that's how I've been thinking about it. Because I understand, like Joe, I understand your question exactly. Because we don't want this to be just a monitoring framework or a document that sits on a shelf. It's got to lead to tangible outcomes, I agree.
So it's gonna be two more examples literally live this week. So I've had two meetings with two private sector companies, both of whom are very, very interested, because obviously they understand the requirements in terms of our procurement policy. They want to know how they can make that live. And I'm having detailed discussions about how we can do that from people furthest away from the labour market. This framework makes it so much easier that I'm with my partner to say, right, if we develop that right, both in the supply chain and the subbies, we can be working with MSD to get the pipeline of people within our area to actually start to get employment. So, you know, it's real and it's live, and this is the relationship that's helping us do that.
So I guess.
Sorry, Sam, if I can just, sorry, add to that briefly. The other aspect that I think will be important for governors in terms of decision-making, so how do you approve allocation of funding and resources with the expectation of outcomes, is that with the monitoring framework, which is just one part of the paper that's in front of you, it enables an understanding of areas that are perhaps impacted disproportionately by COVID nineteen, which organisations can then determine how to collectively respond to with an expectation of the impact or the outcomes that that investment and that allocation of effort should achieve in relation to the framework that you have. So if you know where your performance is currently at as a city and as governors, you can decide about how you want to prioritise allocation and effort of resources and funding. It should be on the basis of achieving a particular output or outcome that can then be demonstrated through the monitoring framework.
Okay, and just one more question if I can. So just in terms of those work streams, we would be, if I'm, if someone out in the public at the moment's looking at it, we would be the one that looks at how we make the council easier to deal with in terms of development and the like. And I don't say that, you know, facetiously, but it's just a, I mean, it's all been reported to us, but shouldn't we have a work stream which says, hey, we want to break down the barriers, we want to? So is that in there or am I missing it?
I'm not sure it necessarily needs to be a work stream. I think that's a, it would be an overriding principle that must run through all of this. And it's not just the council being easy to work with, it's every single agency being easy to work with, easier to work with.
Don't we have direct, it feels like that's something we have direct control over.
Yes, it is.
And it's being fed up to us, so why wouldn't that be?
Why, it's a performance measure for our chief executive.
That's, that's, to change our organisation, I think that's the job I'm employed to do anyway.
All right, I'll just leave it.
Oh, no, I'd like to answer that if you don't mind, Sam. There are two parts to being business friendly. One is being business friendly and enabling business with the right supporting regulations. And the other, of course, is being attractive and investor friendly. So to answer your question specifically, it sits in two work streams. The first is the smart sustainable city. So that's been the type of city that people want to invest in and have the right investment opportunities. And then confident city, presenting ourselves as an attractive proposition with the right enabling environment. So, yeah.
You've earned your pay today, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Melanie?
I've just got some questions around the indicators. And there's three different ones I'm sort of looking at. One for business survival. Are there other more direct measures that you can, you can take there? Because consumer and business confidence sounds eerie fairy to me.
Yeah, okay, so we have measures within specific projects. So for instance, within the Regional Business Partners Programme that we administer alongside the chamber, we've got very detailed KPIs in terms of the business, number of businesses we need to serve and the amount of funding that we need to allocate. If we were to bring those types of measures, which are very granular but very important, up to a program level, you would start to see a dashboard that was just unworkable with far too much data within it. But we are monitoring at a project level some of that type of activity.
But could you do something as a summary, like two thousand businesses fell over and five thousand got created or something? You know?
We certainly could. And I think as we produce the quarterly dashboard, there will be commentary. So where we start to see alarming or notable indicators at a project level, then we would include that in the commentary as opposed to specifically within the dashboard.
What was this one? With safety and security as well, I thought there were other measures that you could have too. So is that sort of in the same kind of? Like, there's lots of other aspects to safety and security than the two that are indicated there.
So one of the, there's two aspects to this, I suppose, just to touch on. The first is the Christchurch City Council will organise for information to be collected from a range of different sources. And what we've given you in terms of the paper is a high-level overview of some of the key indicators. From that, there'll be a small group of representatives across some of the agencies. So I'm not sure whether there are particular safety and security aspects that you're thinking of. But the likes of, for example, Orangutan Mariki MSD Community and Public Health will be involved in providing a recommendation around which of the key indicators go forward into the dashboard, because we're starting to see trends that are starting to come through. Or we've seen significant changes, perhaps in some of the underlying data that comes through, along with some of the commentary to help to explain what the data is telling us and what we could anticipate over the next six, twelve and eighteen months. So to short answer your question, there's a broad range. The indicators that we've provided to you here are more of the key indicators. Sitting underneath that, there are many, many indicators that can and will be considered. It's a matter of how we make sense of those and present them in a way that provides you with an overall understanding of the impactors.
And just sorry, one more. With loneliness, how does that get measured?
Yeah, so that's a subjective measure, which is undertaken through surveying of local residents.
Right, okay.
And it's a self-reported measure on a scale.
Jimmy?
Thank you. One more. Regarding to economic indicators, travel, I remember last time the presentation, particularly for men, you would like to kind of, to more integrate the airport and also the vehicle transport, particularly regarding to those number of passengers. Do you understand that even the airport, then the target, year by year, always had the year before, the target of seven million people arriving at Christchurch in the airport. But after the, maybe the COVID nineteen or maybe the, under the most attack, also the impact, whether we still have this indicator and whether we are setting out or year by year.
Yeah, no, I understand your question. And it's certainly, it's embedded there under the travel indicators in terms of visitor arrivals, which is obviously a component of passengers through the airport each year. And so like a number of these measures, there's levels of detail that sit underneath the key performance indicators that would supplement the actual dashboard stats that you're going to be seeing on a quarterly basis. But yeah, absolutely, that's being monitored and measured and will continue. Yeah, from a cruise berth point of view, absolutely, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, it's not just air flights.
Yeah, absolutely.
Aaron?
Yeah, got some questions. The first one is the question I asked the last couple of times around GDP numbers. And us being such a poor performer as the main centre, do we know why yet and how we change that? Because your measurabilities, you said before, Joe, and Sam's question around, will do better than others. If our baseline's purely GDP, that shouldn't be hard if you start at the bottom. We should be able to overtake someone. And, or are we looking to lift everything?
With respect to GDP, I'll give the same answer I gave last time, which is our relative, our proportion of GDP has been falling relative to the rest of the country, which partly reflects the fact that we're coming off the rebuild stimulus and we have been aware of that problem since ninety, twenty sixteen, rather. It is an ongoing area that we need to see improvement, which is why we need to transform the economy and start to focus on sectors where there's the greatest opportunity for growth. That fits within the smart sustainable city stream, which is all about developing the sectors and clusters of industry where there is the greatest opportunity for growth. But there's also a productivity issue within the Canterbury economy, and that sits within the business survival and business growth stream. And the work that we do in partnership with the chamber is absolutely essential to growing the performance of individual businesses and then in turn the number of employees that they're able to employ. So it's a problem that is known to us, it's been known to us for some time.
Yeah, productivity is a big issue.
Big issue.
And quite a big one is, for me, is, and it's not in here, under the levers that you're using. And that's holding the government to account. And like this, they were called shovel-ready, but it's shovel eventually, I've changed it to projects. Because they were meant to be shovels in the ground when you could go back to work. Everyone's back at work and no shovels have hit the ground. And that doesn't stimulate an economy. It will keep the economy going longer term, but they were, most of them are projects that were going to happen. A lot of them are one-time spends, they're not going to create long-term employment, hardly the Hoover Dam. So who's holding the, well, that's the famous one of the twentieth century. Who's holding the government to account? Because it doesn't say in there who's going to do that.
It's next Saturday, that's next Saturday's agenda, it's not today.
What's that?
Oh, it's true. It's not really a question for staff to answer.
But shouldn't that be in here? I mean, you got, because, and it leads into my next question. I had someone in the public ask me if, because they don't look to the council for any economic drivers in their business. But they said, if the council didn't do this, what would change? What would happen to Canterbury if this didn't happen? Would the economy be exactly the same? Would it be better, would it be worse? Like, that was, and that was a genuine question. I don't think they were being facetious. I think they said, like, what are the measurable outcomes and how? And you did say before that we will do better.
If I could give you a tangible example, I think we survey alongside the chamber the businesses who we support through our business growth and business support services. And we have one of the greatest, the highest performances in the country in terms of the satisfaction that businesses indicate based on the service that we provide. And we specifically ask them if our intervention has helped the performance of their business, and they say it has. So this year, that's three thousand five hundred businesses who have received support that they value through the intervention that we've been able to offer. And in addition to that, there's another eleven thousand businesses who have sought help through the help line, which is administered by the chamber and that we support and promote. So I think the answer is, we don't know what would happen if we didn't do what we do, because that's not a scenario we're able to model. But we know that it is valued by our partners.
Right, and if we are doing this here in Christchurch, Right. And if we are doing this here in Christchurch slash a bit of Canterbury, but it's mainly Christchurch focused, and you say in the measurables, we will be better off than the other centres, any other centres doing these plans?
Better than the national average was.
Better than the average.
Better than the national average.
Yeah, yeah. So are others doing this or not doing this? How many? Do we know?
I don't know the number of others. There are other T L As who are planning for recovery. Some plans are, have a reasonable level of sophistication and others have a lesser level of sophistication. We're very pleased that we were able to go out early because we understand recovery in Christchurch. And so we are very proud of the work that we are doing here. And I think that members should also be proud of that against the national context.
Okay, so my last question would be around unemployment. How will our numbers stack up against everyone else's? Because that's the, for me, jobs are really important to people and important to mental health and important to the entire economy. What will our number be versus everyone else's? It will be the measure I'll be holding this paper to going forward, because that's a recovery or it's a loss. But do we have a number in mind versus everyone else?
Well, it's a collaborative picture, isn't it? Because, I mean, perhaps if, sorry, I can't remember.
Because we have to look people in the eye. And when we've done a recovery plan, when someone comes up and says, my son no longer has a job, hasn't had one for six months, what are you doing about the economy? And I'll say...
Well, we can't.
Sorry, I just was conferring.
Yeah, sorry.
Our colleague at MSD. We are obviously looking at our performance relative to other regions. And the discussion we were just having is that it is obviously possible to report on that. We've, we've got that within our economic indicators. So we'll make sure that we prioritise specifically reporting back against the national average with respect to job seeker numbers and other benefit numbers.
Yeah, yeah. And just straight up employment versus non-employment, partial employment.
That's right.
If we do that from looking back on where Christchurch was versus then a year ago or five years ago, and then going forward would be good.
Such a great point, Erin. And that's why we've also got other indicators, which, because the job seeker allowance is only one part of the picture, obviously, because not everybody is eligible for the job seeker allowance. Yeah, it's a great point.
So the other reflection I would make as well is, the alternative is actually we don't partner to drive some different outcomes, and we just sit in isolation as individual institutions just doing whatever it is we do. The consequence of that, in my view and my experience, would be that the citizens of Christchurch would be not getting the best service, and they would be in a poorer position than trying to do what it is we're trying to do, which is collective effort to make an impact. So you've got to weigh it up against the opportunity to try and drive and make a difference versus sitting here in isolation and not doing anything. And I don't think that that's what the local authorities should be doing.
Yeah, I think there was an interesting point in here in relation to Mano Fenua, because in a way it sort of picks up on that. Obviously, there's, you know, the timing has stretched their capacity to engage, but they want to be thoroughly engaged. But they've actually picked up that their focus will be on specific operational projects within the recovery plan that support development of the Maori economy, Maori business and skills pathways for Rangatahi. So again, it's just recognising that it's a collaborative story. It's not one agency doing the doing. It's a collective effort. And then reporting against the collective ambition, rather than us all separating off into our individual silos and expecting something to change. I think somebody had a definition of madness that associated with that.
That's called Einstein's definition of insanity.
Yeah. Um, Yani and Anne.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just wanted to pick out some of the points that have been made. So one of the questions I have went up, and thank you, you've given me some of the, the budget attached to some of the programmes, but they seem to be things that central government is putting money into. And I'm not quite sure, like, if you take, like, the pupil pathways, we're putting 60K in. You take the student quarantine, you take, there's some other ones, I think, around, in this, around job training. It just, it seems to me very unclear why we're putting money into things that government have agreed to fund. And also, actually, if you take, like, the whole training, education and employment pathway programmes, it seems like four or five different work streams, rather than kind of one single destination where anyone can go and get the help and be put in the right direction. So I'm just really interested in, in that. I know that, I've actually heard that we are actually eligible for that, that money as a council, for, for the money that the council, the government made available for East Christchurch. But I just don't, it's a bit like the comments that have been made before. I don't, I don't really see the kind of specific outcome that we're trying to achieve from here. So I just wondered if you had any, any reflection on why we're contributing to things that central government are funding, but also whether or not there's a more holistic approach that we could do to kind of be a point of one, a one-stop-shop kind of, rather than have a myriad of different agencies involved? That was the first question.
So with respect to the central government funding question, which is a really important one, we would never look to duplicate activity that was being funded elsewhere. Often, central government funding into particular programmes is contingent on local funding. And often, an investment from the local government will be matched or significantly enhanced by central government funding. But certainly, your point is a very good one. We should never invest where it duplicates activity elsewhere. In relation to the pupil pathways specifically, that was a programme where our investment was able to amplify the outcomes and lead to a further expansion of the programme. And we're co-investing alongside the University of Canterbury on that one.
Isn't government putting money in for people to train?
So that particular programme is supporting young Maori in Pacifica to consider STEM careers. So it's a specific initiative designed to achieve an outcome based on an insight that young people, young Maori in particular, were not moving or select, self-selecting STEM. So it's an educational awareness programme that was identified as necessary within two local high schools.
But what's all the money that government's made available, the 120 million for, for Rangatahi and East Christchurch? Is that, is none of that?
So that's designed for use by community groups.
Well, it's the same, like, isn't it the same thing? Like, why, yeah, I still don't quite understand. Like, we would pay for something that government's putting money into. Like, it just, it just, it's really strange to me, anyway.
Yanni, I think your point is a really valid one in terms of understanding how the collective effort is being applied, whether it's central government funding, local government funding, NGOs or Mano Fenua. One of the challenges that we have at the moment, that we've had for some time, as we've talked about repeatedly here today, is that there have been organisational responses and approaches that have been developed to solve particular problems. Rather than wider effort across a range of organisations to determine how those limited resources can best be applied, what we're proposing here provides an opportunity for central government, local government, NGOs and others to understand how those efforts can be applied in a more efficient and coordinated way. So if we take a program level approach and we're looking at work streams and we have an understanding of the different initiatives and activities that are being implied against some of those, it is highly possible that we will identify some existing areas of duplication and or gaps. But if we don't change the approach that we're taking, that will continue to occur and we won't get any better at doing things differently. So we need to take an approach where we have a greater understanding of the whole, not just the council's contribution to that, but we invite our partners that we have here today to also provide a greater level of cohesion around what we're each contributing. That will help us to ensure that we're not duplicating, we're funding in the right areas, and we are leveraging and augmenting private sector investment, central government investment and local community effort.
All right. Because, I mean, and I've, I've fed this in, like, if you take the building financial capability, we referenced the M F, MSD putting in like 65K, but councils put more money in than that.
Yep.
And we don't seem to have any clear picture of where the need is or any strategic work around, actually, government's funding it, why would we fund it? Or actually, here's the gaps in, in the areas of the city where the provision doesn't exist.
So the monitoring framework helps us to understand where the need is, which then enables inter-agency conversations to discuss how the, who is best placed to respond.
So what you're describing is exactly the things we're trying to solve.
Right, okay. So I guess it's about the point that Erin and Sam have made, is, is when are we going to get to that point where we can actually see what the problem is and what we're trying to achieve so that we can measure it? You know, if you take things like unemployment rates, you know, in certain parts of our city or for certain demographics, I think, you know, the response we've had initially has been, we don't have that granular data, so we don't, we don't know.
So if the council decides to approve the monitoring framework, oh, sorry, the recs that are in the paper are seeking leadership and governance from the council, agreement to the monitoring framework, noting that it will change and will evolve and be enhanced, because what this is likely to do is raise further questions, which we'll dig deeper into, and also to approve for the council to produce and monitoring a monthly dashboard, which helps you as councilors to understand where the need is, what the trends are, what some of the emerging issues are, and to hold to account other agencies in terms of what they are doing to respond to those. So again, we're trying to respond to the problems that we all are aware of.
Yeah.
What we need is your approval to actually start doing some of those things to bring them forward to you.
Right, thank you. Two other questions. One is, in the central city regeneration review, it came out really clearly that the creative economy was a really important part. And it also said that the current state assessment demonstrated little evidence that decisions are made knowing how they will leverage the creative economy as part of accelerating outcomes across the central city. And when I read through the kind of plan that we've got, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't feed this in earlier, but I know other councils have raised it, you know, when you look at things like shovel-ready funding, there doesn't seem to be any priority or thought given to the creative sector and the role that that can play, even though that could have a really amazing impact. So I just wondered whether there was any work happening in that space, if there was any, anything more that we could do, given that we talk about innovation and entrepreneurship. We're putting a lot of money into that, but that seems quite different to, to the creative sector.
I'm not sure I absolutely agree that there isn't innovation and entrepreneurship in the creative sector. I think they're probably some of the most innovative and creative people.
But we're funding like startups, you know, business startups.
In the social indicators and economic indicators, so it sits in the between, is that whole creative energy?
Creative next.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what, what we've got, the programme we've got is coordination and investment into intensive support for high-growth potential startup and scale-up businesses. Like, I guess I was more thinking, you know, if you contrast it, what I understand, the impact of a film studio would be in the city versus maybe a stretch of road that gets upgraded or, or, you know, possibly a cycleway. If you looked at the jobs created, how do you balance what gets the investment?
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's kind of a, there's a couple of gaps with the focus on business survival and the labour market. It's kind of like existing businesses and employment, whereas there's a, there's a whole entrepreneurial and the creative connection, the two parts of the same thing, that sort of kind of, they sit in the middle, because it's encouraging. And the particular sectors, and you know that I hate the word supernodes, but there you go. But, but all of those speak to that entrepreneurship and creativity aspect of them, as we develop industries that are connected with our past but actually represent very much our future. So.
Yeah, it's a, this is a really difficult one. It's like the tech sector. Creative economies sit within a number of economies. And as you've outlined, they sit inherently deeply within our innovation and entrepreneurship ecosystem. And we've deliberately designed that system so that it's joined up, so that it staircases people from startup to scale up within our individual incubators. And we've got aspirations to grow that further. But there are some specific sectors, and screen is one that you have rightly identified, and we're putting a great deal of thought into currently, that we can do a lot more detailed and focused work on. So when we come back to you to talk to you about the long-term planning process, we will be having a conversation around where screen sits within our economy and within our creative economy specifically. And then the other point I'll make, so that's, that's too direct initiative to support the creative economies, is we have the Toa Ototahie Art Strategy, Christchurch Art Strategy, which again is a really important contributor to our cityscape. And we need to be considering the priorities within that strategy as well, and particularly as we promote the city, we attract events, the multi-use arena conversation that you've just had is part of all of that. So I, I appreciate that, that, that's a long answer to what was quite a short question, but really that creative economies piece sits across in the same way our tech economy sits across a number of sectors.
I guess I was asking sort of at a higher level, if we're investing $45 million in a new airport or we're investing, you know, X amount in cycleways.
Yanni, this is the, this is the recovery strategy.
Yeah, no, I get that. So for recovery for jobs, for jobs, which is what?
It is now 215, and I really would like us to kind of focus on, on, on other elements. I think we've, I think, I think there's good feedback that's going here. This is a living and breathing document. It's not, you know, we don't sign off today and then it's the end of the matter. It's.
All I was trying to say is, having, when we're prioritising things like budgets and decision-making around what's going to have the greatest impact.
Which is what we're going to do for the L T P. We'll get there.
That would be good to understand how, how those trade-offs are being made. And I just...
We will definitely, definitely want to know that. Anne, last question.
Probably follows on a bit. But just the three-point to a ongoing engagement critical that we, local communities affected by COVID are enabled and supported. So I'm just wondering, just to, just to clarify, so, so OC RP wouldn't have direct contact with, with those people, but direct contact with the agencies that we would be dealing with those people? Is that how you see it working? So I'm thinking of a young, I don't know, Indian guy that's looking for a job. How would he know where to go to and who would he go to? And how would this help in this situation?
Yeah, great question.
Yeah.
So I guess the starting point for us was being mindful that there has been a lot of, and is currently, community engagement that's occurring.
Yeah.
And one thing that, one of the many things that frustrates communities is when you ask them multiple times the same sorts of questions.
Yeah.
What, what can do for you? So we're looking to leverage off the strengthening communities strategy refresh, which has just occurred, the Greater Christchurch 2015 engagement, which is occurring at the moment, to understand at a community level what is occurring and where might there be concentrations of impact. In terms of individuals and how they respond, services, and we have some of the regional executives for various services with us today, can then gear their services and target more towards, based on our understanding of whether there are geographical concentrations, whether there are ethnic communities or communities of interest.
Right.
So it's really about knowing where the impact is occurring, so that collectively we can think about how best to apply our services. We're not anticipating at this stage that the engagement would be, you know, broad level engagement with a community that has been affected, that at this stage is relatively hard to define and identify. But it's more about how we target our actions and the services that we provide to those individuals collectively across the whole.
Yeah. So I just want to do an analogy. When we talk about our companies, we talk about the family. Yeah. Don't we? Well, this is another branch of the family, as I see it. This is a network of relationships to ensure that we're putting our information, our evidence to get the biggest impact, and knowing what each other is thinking about or is actually doing, and how we can lever off that, might be twos, threes, nine, whatever it might be, to get even better outcomes. That, that's, you know, it's a relationship piece more than anything else. So I think engagement is probably the wrong word. Probably more connections. You know, how does the ordinary, everyday person connect with what you're, you know, going to be, or what this is going to be offering? How's the pathway? Where is that, where do they start? And all that stuff. Because that, that's the agency's job, isn't it, rather than you're, you're connecting those together? With a glue. Yeah, got it. Okay, thanks.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Let's carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, let's carry on with it.
Right. I'll move that, I'll move that we exclude the public and allow for Gary Moore, Chair of the External Advisory Group, to remain up. Public has been excluded for item 37. Do I have a second of Mike Davidson? I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That is carried. Thank you. Those opposed say no. That is Carrie. Thank you.